Tyler.
Here.
Jeff.
Yep.
John.
Here.
Jeff, here.
Here.
All present. All right. We first need, our first step is the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda is approved. So as you know, tonight we have public forum. This is the first time in the COVID situation that we're having them in. They'll be coming in one at a time. In addition to that, we did also get, I think upwards of about 43 emails. And those will be a part of the board packet, so you can read those. They came out not too long ago. I did take a chance to read them and I, of course, I didn't. And I, anytime there was a question, I tried to insert it in this section of the thing. So hopefully, as people are listening, they can, they can hear their question being asked and get some answers. That said, you'll see on your tables, we have printed out our policy for a public forum. This is a part of our board policy that already exists. All of the folks have been given that out there. So this is our chance to listen, as we know, and can certainly address any comments or things during the proper time of the agenda as a board. But right now, we'll just primarily listen. That said, I believe the first person on our list for public forum is Dr. Chad Harzwick. Do we want to see if they can come in? Hi Chad. There's a couple of places. You can either stand right there or anywhere you feel comfortable. Okay.
I'll stand on the X.
Mark the spot, I guess.
X marks the spot, yeah.
I had a couple of notes, so I'll probably try to find time.
Sure.
I got about 20 minutes, so I only have like a five minute, so. So if you want to hear what I can say, give me a couple more minutes. I spent a lot of time researching this. Before you start my, before we start my official comments, I just want to thank you for letting me speak and I want to thank you for your service. So I come from and family of educators. My father was an associate principal at Johnson High School for many years. My wife's brother-in-law is the superintendent of Bond Durant. Her parents were both teachers. Her mother was on the school in Los Angeles for many years. So we get why you're here. You're here to serve the community, to do what's best, the best interest of the children. So I thank you for that. That being said, you're going to hear a lot of conflicting opinions. You're going to have, and no matter what you do, someone's probably going to be mad at you. So glad it's you and not me. But thank you for your service. So I am Dr. Chad Harzwick. I talk fast. I mean, I'm going to talk faster because of tonight. I'm an emergency medicine trained. I met my wife, Dr. Anderson, who's dermatologist in Iowa City. We moved here in 2005. I worked in the ER from 2005 to 2012, took some time off for health reasons, whatnot. In 2016, asked me to come back. I opened up, we opened up urgent care, Front Clinic. I've been the medical director there since and also working as a physician. We have two children. Alex is 15, she'll be a sophomore. Logan's 12, he's in seventh grade. So I'm here to speak to you as a physician, but also as a parent. And I'm not asking the board to do anything to anyone else in the community that I'm asking for my own children. That being said, I feel strongly that it's the best interest of the children to go back to school in a full-time capacity with as little disruptions to their normal activities as possible. I mean, full activities, extracurriculars, et cetera. I don't think you need me, because you are all experts on this, which I have other people and sort of talking about it, to tell you how important school is for the emotional, mental, physical development of the children, just way beyond the learning and how detrimental being out of school is. And so with that in mind, I think you have to have a overwhelmingly irrefutable reason not to be in school. I think that has to be your baseline. That's my opinion. So I want to talk a little bit about the focus on the fear versus the facts. I think a lot of what we focused on up to this point in the pandemic has been based on fear. And now we have more facts, which we didn't have in March, okay? Which we didn't have in April. Every week, we're getting more facts. If you look at the facts, they're fairly irrefutable that COVID-19 is not the same pandemic in terms of the children in this age group that we're worried about as it is in other demographics, okay? When this first came on, I have a really good friend from Italy. People were dying there. The death rate was 5 to 10%. There was predictions of 3 to 4 to 5 million people dying just in our country alone. We did the shutdown based on flattening the curve. There was thoughts that hospitals would be overwhelmed, we were running ventilators, we were running PPE. That's why we did the shutdown. None of that actually came to be, by the way. I'm not aware of a single case where they actually ran out of ventilator around the hospital beds. They actually built extra hospitals in Washington State, New York City, that they didn't even use, okay? We stopped doing all of our elective procedures at very early at the end of Farland to preserve PPE and we never ran out. And people, quite frankly, probably missed out on getting the essential credit they needed because we shut down. So what we learned from that, okay? I could talk about that for an hour. The fact that we know COVID-19 is highly contagious and it is extremely deadly in certain populations. Who are those five populations? 65 and above and especially 85 and above. But in addition to that, it's people with comorbidities. The vast majority of people who are dying from this also have a comorbidity. Interestingly enough, it's more cardiovascular than respiratory. The respiratory is there, chronic kidney disease, diabetes. The typical things you would think of is comorbidities, but then also her being present in the elderly, okay? So that's the fact. The fact that it's the school-aged children is neither serious nor deadly on average. In fact, I'm so glad I came out with this. You've probably seen this, the COVID-19 planning considerations for school entry from the American Academy of Pediatrics. I hope you have this document. Just going to point out two things in bold on the first page. The AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming schoolers should start with the goal of having students physically present in school. I think that should be our baseline. I know I'm talking fast. The second one is, and this is important, children and adolescents are less likely to be symptomatic and less likely to have severe disease resulting from SARS-CoV-19. In addition, children may be less likely to become infected and to spread infection. This is kind of borne out by, you saw Senator and Dr. Rand Paul, that little thing with the foul key the other day, that there was a Senate, I think, committee. I've met Dr. Paul. I think he's a brilliant man. He brought up a lie there I'm not going to go over, but they looked at Europe, 22 countries that went back to school, there was not a spike in COVID-19 cases. They did contact tracing studies, I think in four countries. Not a single case of child to adult spread, because there's that concern. In this country, Brittany received, followed 25,000 daycare kids who kept going to daycare even during the pandemic, about 0.16% got COVID. YMCA had something similar, 40,000 kids. Prominent research from John Hopkins said, and I quote, "That COVID-19 doesn't seem to transmit child-to-child, like flu." All right, let's look at some numbers. As of June 17, CDC data, 103,000 fatalities in the United States roughly, or I think we're up to 125,000, maybe more. It's more every day, I know this. Of those, less than one year, eight. One to four, five. And the demographic we're concerned about here, five to 14, we're talking 13 deaths. And the age 15 to 24, that's how they broke it down, 125 deaths. That's 0.013% of the fatalities were five to 14, of the 12 fatalities, 0.121% fatalities. This disease is deadly. It is not attacking the children. They're not at risk. And just so you know, unfortunately, during that timeframe of the five to 14 age where there was 13 fatalities, there are actually 1,755 deaths in the country. And similar to that. So all the other data that I have basically goes along the lines that it's not serious or deadly for children and they don't tend to pass to each other or adults, especially, I could go over that if you want in the future. More data basically comparing influenza death rates to COVID. Actually, for COVID-19 to this point, it's less deadly for children than influenza, less hospitalizations. If you're looking for, well, what if you wanted to have an out and you're looking for a vaccine? Four years for the most vaccine, it's the fastest vaccine we ever had. If they start trials in January, it's going to take one to two years to get safety data. I personally wouldn't take it until you have good safety data. So if you're going to not do school, you're going to have to be out probably three to four years. I could go on. Last thing I would say is I have a lot of more information about this as a physician and someone who's passionate about this. If the board wants my expertise, consultation, wants to meet more at length, to go over all the other data that I have, I'd be happy to do that. Thanks for your time. I know I'm coming along. We did appreciate it. Good luck.
Thanks.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Chad. It looks like the next one is Katrina Bemis. Do you guys want?
Well, I know you can talk faster.
Hi Katrina. You can go later, you can stay here. It's wherever you feel comfortable.
Okay.
And just, I'm sorry to do this. I'm just going to start this so we can keep an idea of time, okay?
No problem. So my name is Katrina. My son, James, will be actually starting here. I guess he'll be a third grader. We live in North Ames, so that's where I'm in the district. Basically, I, I'm a nurse, sorry, I come right from work. At Mary Greeley. And I'm not going to be here to debate whether or not the kids should come back to school. I've read all the research. I've read the American Academy of Pediatrics, I heard it after Chad has said. I still think that we, there's a lot of things we don't know about it and a lot of time that we need to see, but I understand a lot of the concerns, all of them actually, for the children. My biggest thing that I came forward here to advocate today is just for parents that decide, plan where we're at, when, you know, we're still early out, we're not quite at full time yet. Just an option for parents that don't feel comfortable with sending their kids back to school for some guidance along the way on how to make sure that their kids do not fall behind. My husband and I aren't sure exactly how we feel right now and I've talked to other parents that feel the same way, but just so the kids still are on track. Yesterday, I saw that Ames School came up with a second hybrid option that they call parent's choice, I think. That is a kind of, I think, along the lines with I'm mentioning. So that's just kind of what I'm advocating for today because I really love my son to be back in school. He loves school. I think socialization is huge. He's an only child and I think it's very beneficial for all children. But if come, when school starts, I don't, personally, or other parents don't feel comfortable. I loved what the school district did last year. I mean, the teachers did an amazing job. I really appreciate all the time and everything that you guys have put into and the effort. It really was very helpful. So that's basically what I'm looking forward to advocate for. So thank you very much for making this available to be able to be heard. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person that I have on here is Rosie Stanley. You can, there's an X right there that you can stand, that's six feet. You can sit here in the middle. It's wherever you feel comfortable. There's also a spot here. It's wherever you want.
Perfect.
That's good.
And people are comfortable with me.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
I'm going to just start with time. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Rosie Stanley and my son, Sanjay, will be a junior this year. My husband and I feel that of the four years in high school, the junior year is probably the most crucial. It's when the kids are applying to colleges, taking their PSAT, ACT, and ACT tests. My husband and I, like many other parents, are very concerned for my son's junior year. We feel that the sooner the district has some clarity on how it wishes to proceed and how it wishes to structure its learning, the more relieved we parents will be. I know that a hybrid model is being talked about. I take classes online and I will say, it takes tremendous amount of self-direction and motivation to stay on top of the material. What I have found to be useful to me is to supplement the learning with discussion posts, chats, online check-ins. Online check-in and online learning is not easy. And if the district does decide to go this route, I hope that you will consider how you're going to keep the kids engaged and especially how you're going to monitor accountability. Remember, many of these kids are going to be by themselves at home. My husband and I are extremely anxious and we sincerely hope that the district will provide a robust academic plan for the year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person on this is Buffy Klaat. Oh, sorry. Hi Buffy.
Hi.
I just have a, I'm just starting this because I can forget all the time.
She's going to kick you out after five.
No.
I could go on for a little bit. So hello, thanks for having me. I'm Buffy Klaat, as you guys all said. I think I mostly see familiar faces. So let me start by saying, I've been working on one of the committees to help with the planning and that's been a really fortunate thing for me. I'm pleased to be part of that. I think we've had lots of thoughtful conversations, so I'm confident in our team to make the right decision. I'm only here as a parent and want to share with you what the experience was like from March through June. So I love Gilbert. I have all three kids in Gilbert. My oldest just graduated from Gilbert. She is experiencing this from the university side. My next youngest, Spencer, is, will be a junior and so he was a sophomore this last year. And then I have Cooper, who finished his sixth grade year. So each of them, both my boys in the district, experienced that a little differently with the high school. With that being posed as optional, unfortunately, my son is the one that was like, good, checked out, right? I'm done with that. So I don't know that he put in what he should have, even though he's a traditional learning student. You have to be very self-motivated to follow that curriculum on your own and then eventually the opportunity was put out for grades and that kind of thing. And so there was an option for everybody, which I thought was a nice option. But ideally, I wish, none of us could have foreseen what would happen from March through June and really planned for that adequately. So all the grades given for the district, I understand that it was the best we had at that time. However, when we look at going back, I think there's a few things that I learned as a parent that I think we can take away from that. Number one, high schoolers, if you tell them something that's optional, it's like unloading the dishwasher, they're not going to do it, right? Presentation is everything as a marketing and communication professional. Presentation and communication are crucial. So I know that good communication informs and engages and calms fears. And so having a little more of that would be good. And I know a lot of that happened, but maybe at the student level, I would love to see some of that come to the parents as well. Many of the kids just don't have the executive functioning skills to manage that on their own, including self-administered, self-paced learning. So especially at any learning level, my high schooler is a traditional learning student. He did not have that get up and go, I guess, if you will. Specifically, the one I really want to address is my sixth grader. He's dyslexic. So with that challenge, anybody that's on 504 or an IEP, that's a special set of skillsets and learning that needs to take place. So for me, it kind of felt like I got an additional job, but I'm not qualified for. You guys are the experts with that. So it was a challenge to fit that in and then the curriculum wasn't designed for him. It wasn't designed for him to excel. And so he just needs that one-on-one, small group instruction. And so I feel like when we reapproach this plan, number one, I'm a big proponent of having everybody back full-time. However, things change daily, so we never know what that's going to look like. We need to address the critical needs first. Those are our critical needs. Those students that have IEPs and 504s and that need some additional helps. Those are the kids that we need to address first, in my opinion, and really make sure that we support them and their parents too. As a working parent, I work for a great company that's very supportive, but unfortunately, they don't pay me to just sit and look pretty. I'm expected to work during the day, so even though I was home from March through June, my priority is work during that day. And then when I'm beyond those hours, he's too tired and his attention span is not there to do some of that learning. So we really had to structure our day and accommodate that in a thoughtful way so that I didn't overburden him and make him hate school. And that's a fine line. So that's really my priority, is making sure that we can get all of these kids back, social, emotional, athletics. Those are all big parts of my kids. My oldest thrives in sports. It's like his identity. I think that's why he goes, no offense, but that might be why he goes to school. He likes to social. He likes his friends. He likes sports. And even he is like, I'm ready to go back to school. I think everybody's ready to go back to school. I want us to be thoughtful about what that looks like and I think we can do that. But I'm a full proponent of everyone back full-time safely with thoughtful planning and sanitation and social distancing and all of those things. My priority is really those IEP kids, 504 kids, kids that are non-traditional learners, they have to be the first in the building.
Thank you. Perfect.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Buffy. Thank you.
Thank you. That was perfect timing, by the way.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Yeah, she's probably correct. She's a pro. She's a pro.
She was a pro for you?
Yeah.
Sasha Arson? Did I say that right?
You did. All right.
Hello, my name is Sasha Arson and I will have two children in elementary this fall, depending on the plan put in place for returning. I felt very moved to come speak tonight to advocate for all of these kids that wish for nothing short of normalcy in their lives. I feel we have reached and quite possibly gone beyond the point in our society where the cure has become far worse than the disease. The measures being taken or enforced are causing more harm than good. In the beginning, we were painted this huge scary picture of what this new virus could amount to and not one single part of that picture has come to be true. They said 2.2 million Americans would die and yet currently to date, the mortality rate is .2 to 4%, that's a 99.6 to 99.8% survival rate if you do come in contact with this virus. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's a certain medical intervention that many people choose to do that has a mortality rate of .5 to .7% and that's the annual flu vaccination. That's a choice people make and the mortality rate is greater than this virus. With increased testing, we will for sure gain knowledge of more positive tests, but we must remember positive cases are not the equivalent of sick people. In fact, we see more cases on the rise solely due to this testing. It's just more knowledge. We are on the same line with that. We are seeing hospitalizations and the rate of death decreasing significantly. That also equals that the mortality rate is only going to go down further. The reason I'm pointing this out is to bring some perspective to the situation we're finding ourselves in today. Are we truly going to these lengths for this virus? Now onto the recommendations being discussed to keep us safe and how those are actually scientifically proven to be more detrimental to our health than the actual virus. Here are a few medical references and I do have many more. On masks. Dr. Eli Perensovich, a professor of medicine and epidemiology at the University of Iowa's College of Medicine, said, "The average healthy person does not need to have a mask and they shouldn't be wearing them. There's no evidence that wearing masks on healthy people will protect them. They wear incorrectly, they can actually increase the infection because they're touching their face more often." Dr. Mike Ryan, he's the executive director of WHO, the World Health Organization, of their Health Emergencies Program. He stated, "There's no specific evidence to suggest that the wearing of masks by the mass population has any potential benefit. In fact, there's evidence to suggest the opposite in the misuse of wearing masks properly or fitting it properly." To date, there's no evidence, not one peer-reviewed study, that proves wearing masks prevents the spread of coronavirus. The science just isn't there. What does exist is science pointing out the health hazards of masks. Masks reduce oxygen intake. Masks lead to carbon dioxide toxicity, hypoxia, which can lead to irreversible damage to cells throughout your body, including your brain. Masks trap germs near your mouth and nose, increasing the risk of infection. Masks cause you to touch your face more, increasing the risk of infection. Masks obscure facial features and impede social, normal social interaction. They make it hard to hear and communicate. And like I said, I have elementary kids coming, learning their ABCs, needing that strong relationship to be away from mom. Masks symbolize, sorry, suppression of speech. Think about the quiet kids that already have a hard time speaking up. The new CDC face mask guidelines actually raise liability issues for employees and for employers and schools alike. Face masks may accumulate COVID-19 viruses and other pathogens. If they become wet with saliva or sweat, masks become a breeding ground for bacteria and other pathogens. Asphyxiation hazards. Tight or homemade face masks of impermeable materials or ones that are covered with saliva and mucus may excessively limit breathing. Lastly, science has shown the masks do not work because airborne contagious viruses can pass through all of those materials except, except masks that are tested, the N95 and the ones that are completely sealed to your face. Basically, wearing a cloth or surgical mask is comparable to installing a chain-link fence and trying to keep mosquitoes in or out. That's where we're at with these. I'd like to now speak on social distancing. It's actually a technique that's causing more harm than good.
We're wrapping up our time, I'm sorry. We just have a few more that want us to speak.
Yep.
If you want to be mindful of that. Maybe just a quick pop-up?
Sure. The biggest thing, social distancing, depression, poor sleep quality, accelerated cognitive decline, poor cardiovascular function. Medically speaking, recent studies have shown it's the equivalent of smoking 15 cigarettes a day and being an alcoholic. And then over-sanitizing. Our bodies are meant to be around bacteria and germs. We cannot sanitize these children and these teachers. That will kill our immunity. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Eric Henley. Did he, did he have any drugs?
Eric's here.
Is he done? Okay, there he is. Hi Mr. Henley. You can sit either there or here, wherever you, there's two X's on the floor, wherever you feel comfortable. I have a timer here just because I lose track of time, so you go, I'll start.
Good evening. My name is Eric Henley. I would like to address two issues regarding return to learn and COVID-19. First one is student privacy and the second one is open government. With regard to student privacy, on February 25, 2020, I was part of a meeting with Principal Amy Griffin and Superintendent Lindsay Beecher where the topic of online delivery of instruction to students in their homes was raised. During this discussion, Amy Griffin represented that she had discussed online instruction with the district's legal counsel and that she was advised that the online instruction would violate student privacy. However, in response to the COVID-19 situation, the district started providing online instruction to all students on March 23, 2020, including class meetings via Zoom. This was only 26 days after Amy Griffin represented to me that providing online learning would violate student privacy. On March 31, at approximately 1:00 PM, my daughter was participating in a class meeting via Zoom. During this Zoom meeting, my daughter's teacher, Katie Wallace, took a picture of her students on her screen. On April 7, 2020, Superintendent Lindsay Beecher sent out an email stating, "We ask that you please respect the privacy of students in the classroom. No taking pictures, no screenshots or video recording of these classroom events. This follows guidelines in all of our student handbooks." The elementary school handbook contains the following statements regarding this. Students should not take pictures of other students and please refrain from posting pictures taken at class parties or field trips on Facebook or other social media. School Board Policy 401-12, .12, which covers employee use of cell phones, states, "Cell phones are not to be used for conversations involving confidential student or employee information." Well, it does not specifically prohibit teachers from taking pictures of students with their personally owned mobile devices. It seems like it should be reasonably implied. Based on this, I respectfully request the board answer the following questions and take the following actions. As far as I know, student privacy laws such as FERPA have not changed as a result of COVID-19. Why is the school district going against the advice of its own legal counsel regarding student privacy by providing online instruction to students? Number two, can the school district reasonably take action against families who take pictures or videos of their computer screens in their own homes while students are taking part in class activities? If so, how would this work? How can parents trust the school district to protect student privacy during online instruction when its own teachers do not follow the district's policies regarding student privacy? And finally, I'd like to ask the school board, update School Board Policy 401.12 to explicitly prohibit teachers from taking pictures of students using personally owned devices. Onto the topic of open government. Regarding this, I object to the closed and secret manner in which the Return to Learn Committee has been operated. The Return to Learn Committee was formed at the verbal direction of school board member Tyler Holt during the April 23rd, 2020 school board meeting. According to Superintendent Lindsey Beecher, the members of the school board provided input regarding who should be on the Return to Learn Committee. Finally, school board president Deb Ordall and Superintendent Lindsey Beecher are serving on the Return to Learn Committee. Based on these facts, my opinion is that the Return to Learn Committee was formed by the school board just not under the appropriate procedures prescribed in school board policy 208, which addresses committees. The school board just reviewed and re-approved its policy on committees during its April 13th, 2020 meeting. According to school board policy 208, ad hoc committees formed by the board are subject to open meeting laws. Iowa Code Chapter 21, which covers open meetings, requires that notice of meetings be provided to the public at least 24 hours in advance, that meetings be open to the public and that minutes of the meetings be taken to maintain its public records. The Return to Learn Committee has done none of this. In fact, as far as I know, the names of the Return to Learn Committee members have not even been made public. It is both self-evident and noteworthy that the Return to Learn Committee is deliberating over courses of action that have the potential to result in death for students and staff members within the district. So based on this, I respect the school board, I request that the school board take the following actions. First of all, in school board policy 208, I'd like the grammar error in the second sentence to be fixed because it does not make any sense the way it's written. I would like the school board to make the names of their members of Return to Learn Committee public. I would like the school board to open the Return to Learn Committee meetings to the public and I would like the school board to require the committee to post agendas and minutes.
And then would you email the, those asks that you didn't get to, will you email those to Mr. Henley? Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Jim Anderson is next.
Hi all.
Hi Jim, how are you?
I'm good, Jimmy Anderson, is that there on the X or there on the X?
Jerry, if you're comfortable.
Jimmy Anderson, I've got a seventh grader and a fifth grader coming up. And I've coached the youth sports for 10 years, almost all the sports. So, one of the things that I'll play off of that last one is that the stakeholders in this haven't been surveyed at all, the parents. I would like a survey to go out to all the parents on one question, if they back the Iowa Board recommendations to go back to school. And if you can't do it, I'd like the addresses, the email addresses, so I can do it so we can see what all the parents want to do instead of just these little committees that are getting knowledge from different areas. I totally, my wife and I and our friends totally were in awe of the neighboring states that had our friends and family, kids going to school, right back online, taking tests, getting graded, having teachers on the, on the computer talking with our kids instead of getting old material which we were handed at the beginning and then going into a kind of ad hoc situation online where it wasn't being graded. I think it's been proven all the way across country and major and small rural areas that you can go back to school, be graded and move ahead either online or in person. I hope that we can update that either way we go. Three deaths in Story County, it's just a fact. Eighty percent, say eight out of 10 of you in this classroom will show little to no signs of this virus. We need to protect that other 20%. And if that means sending workbooks home to those kids that have medical issues in their homes, grandparents in their homes, then that's what we should do, send some paperwork. That's what the surrounding states have done successfully. But we need to get back to school full-time, no hybrids, no online, two days going back to school for three days. We need to maybe utilize some of the gym space for extra classrooms. The, the mental aspects of this on the kids, after all the studies have been going on and on now, will be devastating to be staying at home, isolated. The rec sports aren't happening here right now, but all the other sports are going on without a flaw. They're doing a good job with bats, soccer, even soccer's getting ready to kick back up. And we're letting our high school athletes play baseball and softball over here with no problems. So I, everybody else touched on a lot of the other things that I was going to speak about, but I urge you to look at the facts. The kids will do well in school. We don't need the masks. If somebody needs a mask, I highly promote the shields versus the masks. As some others touched, they're just germ fest. If you've gone to Hy-Vee or Walmart and observed people wearing them halfway down, touching them all the time, kids and adults, I've watched you guys. Half of you have touched your faces several times since we've been in here. It's just, it's just human nature. So to mess with masks would be detrimental. The teachers need to see and show their expressions, so if teachers and students want to wear masks, they should be wearing shields instead, is what I'm promoting. I appreciate all the work you guys have done, but I think that survey to the parents is crucial. This administration is fit to send out surveys to teenage athletes to decide the varsity coaches, whether they're going to stay or not, I should say. So the least you could do is send it out to the stakeholders to let us have a say in what goes on and publish that, how many responded and what percent say yes to the Iowa Board recommendations. They deliberated, they studied it, I don't think we need to go any farther than that. Thank you.
Okay, the last person we have on the list is Andy Sage. Hi Andy, how are you? One second. You can, yeah, stand there wherever you like.
Okay.
Right?
All right. I'm nervous, it feels like speech class again. Everyone's perspective that's been heard to this point has been really good and I don't want to repeat that, so I'm just going to offer a different perspective that we maybe not have heard. I'm a small business owner, have three kids in the district. I have employees that are hourly workers and they don't have the option to stay at home and work from home. We work construction, we can't do that remotely. We have seen already with this, the virus that any hour that the kids are out of school results in a parent or grandparent missing billable earning potential. And so, any school schedule that is less than a full school schedule will directly affect the earning potential of the Gilbert District hourly wage earners. And we need to think about the economic impact of having anything besides a full five-day schedule like we normally do. The school system has been consistent for hundreds of years and people have built into their schedules, you know, five days a week, eight to three, and they can work around that. And when we disrupt that, it has a direct impact on their ability to earn. Look at what the community, school district stands for. And it says it's a caring community and we do have to worry about the health risk, but we also have to worry about the ability for parents to provide for their families. And, yeah, it's been tough for them. And from a business owner's perspective, having employees have their workdays interrupted, it wreaks havoc on business owners' ability to generate profit and be in business. And that's going to have a long-lasting effect. And those kids don't understand that, but they'll feel the results. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Okay, that is all that we had on the public forum. So, I believe we'll move on to the next phase of the meeting, which is item number five on the agenda. There's a return to learn overview and discussion, right? And I'm going to turn this over to Carrie. I believe there's a couple of documents. Primarily, we're going to go over the return to learn program. That is the more detailed version, not necessarily the version that went to the state, right? And Carrie, maybe I'll just turn it over to you.
Yeah, so in, I want to preface this real quick as we start talking. This has been, this is such a fluid situation that as we're going through this, there is, I'm 99.9% sure there is going to be a question or questions that maybe we didn't think of in this process. So, one thing that we have up there is we've got all the areas, the different focus areas of our plan. So if there's a question that we need, Deb's going to put it and she's going to put it up on that, up on the board so that we get, we get those snapshots of those things that we, maybe we're like, oh, that's a good question. So, and I want to make sure that our committee chairs that are on our Zoom, we've got committee chairs and our other administrators, because we can't all be in here. I want them to be aware of that too. It's okay if we say, wow, that's a good question. So just, I just want to make sure we preface it that way. So, 5.0 in the Dropbox. That is our return to learn plan that we submitted to the state. And you're going to notice, you might, if you looked through this, you're going to notice it was really either multiple choice or yes or no. The 15, these were all questions that we were required to report out on and then the actual written plan really is the meat of the answers to these multiple choice or yes or no questions. The 15 assurances that are in the top section that is titled Required Continuous Learning, those around, that, those are all centered around remote learning, 100% remote learning. Now, it's important to know that by answering these questions, that cannot move us to an online class setting. It can only move us to that during this pandemic. It cannot even move us to that for a snow day. I mean, that, they specifically said that in, in the paperwork. So I think it's, I just wanted that to be sure. To be a completely remote school such as CAM, which is the Iowa Connections Academy for Clayton Ridge, there'd be a lot more we'd have to do than just answer yes or no to these 15, the top first 15 assurances on here. So that, I just want to make sure that we were all clear on that. I, we are not planning on going over this document and if there's any questions, my guess is that we would, we will answer them as we go through the more media, the meteor of the documents. But if there's something that you're like, ooh, we didn't get to that, at any time, stop us, we will make sure that we get to that question and if we don't, aren't able to answer it, we're going to put it up there so we can get an answer. Does that process sound okay to go through? Yes, Tyler?
So, if I understood you right, then this 13-page document is what's turned into the state?
This, we submitted online, we just go through it and that part's already submitted. This part, what we, our requirement to this one is, which you also have in the Dropbox. We have to post it online, which we will put on our website after this evening.
The long part?
The narrative.
The narrative that's got the meat.
You bet.
Okay, but the state required to check the box?
This is what we submitted to the state. The state wants this narrative on our website. All districts will have to do that and we will do that after this meeting. We didn't, we wanted it after we had the chance to discuss it with you guys.
So the state made this a requirement as well, even though it's not a checkbox? And I'm holding up the text.
Yes, you bet.
It's not just a checkbox?
It's not, no. I think it's important to know that this, and I know whenever we started down this journey, which I can't even tell you what date it is anymore, I do know it's July 1st. This is, this return to learn support document, which I think we shared a month or so ago, we use this as our guide as we went through this process. This is, this was our guide and we, it was just that, it's a support document. The state said, use it as a support document. There might be things you want to add. You are not required to have every part and piece of this, but these are the things you better think about as you're writing this plan. Okay? Does that, any questions on that part of it? Let's see. So, before we get to that though, I did want to address, and I know this came up at, I kind of came up at the public forum as well. So we wanted to, last, I think the last board meeting, we shared survey results from our staff survey on what remote, how they felt about remote learning. Well, we also, on June 1st, we sent, those of you that are parents, by your seeing, we sent a parent survey to all parents in the district, pre-K up to grade 12, up to seniors, seniors that graduated this year. So, or in 2019, 2020. We also sent a separate survey to students grades three through 12. I just want to real quick speak to the parent survey right now. On here, you can see the question is, this was taken June 1st. If we have the same social distancing requirements in August as we do now, what are your thoughts on sending your child to school? Now, we know this is a dipstick, that's what this is. This is, this is where what was happening June 1st or, we approximately had it open for 10 days. That first 10 days in June, this is where 576 responses came. You can see, it's pretty well right down the middle. We've got 49% that say, hey, we're going to send our kids to school. We've got approximately 9% that say, we're going to keep our kids home. Then we've got another 42% that say, I'm not sure right now.
What's the assumed social distancing requirements?
Well, we were saying at the time that they took the survey, what we were hearing in our public at that point. At that point, we were hearing six feet. We were hearing where, but the masks were a little bit more, now we're more masked.
But that was not explicitly asked in this, right?
No, it wasn't. It was just saying, thinking what you know now. What you're, what you know about what's happening with COVID-19 at that time. That was just, it was like I said, it was a dipstick. So that's what our public, we asked one other question that I did not, I should have given you the graphic and I didn't, but I want to share this one with you. We asked our parents as well, how comfortable, knowing what you know about COVID right now, how comfortable are you with having, with having your student ride the bus to school? 53%, this was same survey, June 1st, 53% said they would feel comfortable with riding the bus. 47% said they would, they would not feel comfortable. Now, once again, it's a dipstick. I mean, we're only, we're sharing that because that is, this is just one piece of data along with research that we're using, that we used in putting this plan together. But we have to know that this is fluid and we don't want to come about any of this discussion. As somebody said it really well earlier, it's not about fear, it's about how can we take care of each other? What do we know and what are we going to do to keep our students and our staff safe and healthy, safety and security, safety and health, I should say. So anyway, I just, I thought it was important to share that information with all of you right now. So that just was, and we're not saying we know, I mean, part of the, part of our plan is centered around continually asking information of our families and of our staff and ultimately of our students. Now, we did not ask the students either of those questions. We didn't feel that was a fair, I mean, that's not really a student's decision as to that, that's a family decision. So we asked those questions of our parents, not our students, just enough wire.
I got a phone call, actually.
And then we also, after this survey, because as we're trying to figure out, hey, if you do a hybrid model, how in the heck do you do it? I mean, nobody's ever done this before and I know I'm really jumping the gun on this, but we did call parents that were on, families on bus routes and asked what bus would they, where do they feel on the bus? But we really wanted, it wasn't about being comfortable and not comfortable on the bus. It was about to figure out how many kids would, are approximately going to be on each bus if we have to do any hybrid model. That's where, that's where that question came from. So. So, are we ready to get into the meat of this?
Yes.
Awesome.
And Carrie, I saw that you gave us another copy.
I did.
Which had a few, just some slightly different things, right?
You will notice that on the copy that I gave you, there is yellow highlighting. It is the same document that you have in your Dropbox, except for the fact that areas that are highlighted in yellow, because this is a working document, our last committee meeting was a week ago today. So we didn't even start putting this document together until after those meetings, after we really started synthesizing all of our information. So as we've made a few changes, anything that's changed since Gil uploaded it yesterday, we tweaked, just because I want to make sure, clarifying that it's, you understand, that it's, as anybody, not just an education, you know, person in education reads this, has an understanding of what it is. So that's where those, that's where the yell is from.
I asked them to like, explain what the abbreviations were, et cetera.
Yeah, she did, and that's okay, I appreciate that. So on the, at the beginning, you'll see we have a definition of onsite, remote and hybrid. Onsite means everybody's here, but that doesn't mean we're, I would be able to open approximately 100 capacity, 100% capacity, meaning that during this, during this COVID experience, event, whatever we want to call it, we could have kids due to family situations, health situations that need to work, need to do remote learning. So even during, they could be, we So even during, they could be, we could have a small pocket of remote if we were 100% onsite learning. And during that 100% onsite learning, we could also have social, we could have some mitigation strategies in place as well.
Do we have any idea, I mean, from a percentage standpoint, or what that would be? I know we all know it's going to be a percentage, but is it five, 10, two?
Four. Are you meaning for who might be remote?
I think it's a lot of the people, not people.
Well, Andrew, I mean, by taking a look at that survey, I would say we have no idea.
Oh, Andrew.
Could you restate that question?
So I was gonna ask you, you mentioned before, like if we, again, just the onsite learning, you mentioned there'd be a percentage of people that probably still wouldn't, if we had any idea. And I know we don't have raw data, but is there any gauge, I mean, again, per that, I would agree. But how, and could we get that? And I guess that's.
How many, how many kids would select, how many families would select onsite even if full onsite was available?
Which would make a difference of how we put it forth too, right? Is this, if it's optional, and if there is no option with outside of pre-existing conditions and whatever.
And we're going to, we're going to get to that, what that option could look like when we get into, I think it's in home safety.
Okay.
So good, thank you, Doug. So we will, that will be addressed as to what that could look like, not the number, but how do you, that's a very good question, Andrew.
It is a good question.
One thing that's important to know also, it doesn't matter what mode, we, model we are in, attendance, attendance will be taken, grades will be issued and credit will be awarded. And that's where this plan is important in the fact that you want that transition. If we, if we have to go into a hybrid or we would have to go into a remote learning option, we want that, that to be seamless for grading and for students in what that learning looks like. So just an FYI on that. If there would not be a chance, we will not say, oh, we're going to go voluntary here. No, these, this will be required and the same rigor would be expected in all three of those models. We do have a hybrid schedule. If we would have, if we cannot be all together, our plan would be to use an A/B model and that would be run Tuesday through Thursday. And you can see here what it, you know, what it says of what, you know, the description of that. Some of you might be saying, well, what, what is the Monday for? Monday is for planning lessons and planning assessments, providing feedback to students who are working remotely, student check-ins, the professional learning that is needed to provide focused time around the virtual aspect of the hybrid model. Now, Andrew asked a question a minute ago about, well, what if we have, what if we have a great, well, I'm going to, I'm going to extend your question a little bit, or I'm sorry. Let's say we have a grade level that we have second grade and we have 20 students that are in a hybrid model. Well, we're going to have to think up, or not in a, I just said that wrong, 20 students that need to be 100% remote and we're in a hybrid model. We might have to look, we're going to be creative here. We might have to say, you know what? We're going to have one teacher that does the remote and we're going to split the other kids up across the other four sections. When we get back to our bricks and mortar building, kids will go back to where they, you know, go back to where they should be. But we have to be fluid in a lot of different ways, not just for students, but for our teachers as well. This is new, this is very new for our teachers that are doing this. I mean, if anybody wants to be back at school, I know it's our teachers, but we also have to think of their health and their safety along with our students as well. Let me turn the page here. So the first big component of our plan is the leadership team. What we did for this is some districts look, and I think we talked about this maybe at the last meeting, some districts looked at putting these teams together and just their district office did. That would be a much bigger district than us, obviously. Some districts had just an administrative team do, do it. We took a different approach and, you know, listening to some of your feedback of involving community members and such, we have, I would say we had very diverse groups of people in our teams and we're going to get to that in a minute. But the first team was the leadership team and we really took that as our administrative team. What we would do is we would meet with our co-chairs, the groups would get together and then we would come together administratively. So every, we knew everybody was on the same page. As we move forward in the implementation and monitoring of this, whatever, however this plan pans out over time, depending on what happens with this, with COVID, you can see where we've kind of delegated communication and roles. You can, we added Tim, we added athletic director, so you would, will need to talk about how we would want in there. So I'm sorry that, yeah, thanks for the thumbs up. I didn't mean to leave you out. Sorry about that. Any questions on that? I think that's, I feel it's pretty self-explanatory, but it's easy to say that when you're, you know, in the weeds with it.
Carrie, I saw that, that we're having weekly meetings for Story County Public Health, Story County Superintendents, all of the schools of the Story County District, or I'm sorry, county, and then Emergency Management, and then the school nurses. Obviously that makes sense because this is a location matters, right? But are we also keeping in touch with the folks in our district that might represent like, or I'm sorry, in our conference?
Yeah, it's, I think it's a good situation. We met the other day, three hours on a Zoom meeting and that was Story County Superintendents, our school nurse, Emergency Management, Story County Public Health. And the thing that we're trying to do with that group, Deb, is we're trying to get a matrix so that we know when we move from one, let's say if we're at a hybrid, whatever, and all of a sudden it starts to tick up in, in Story County, what's going to make the difference or what's going to be the matrix of when we move over to another, you know, a form of the education, maybe like an online or a remote. And also what we've done is, we've done a couple of different things. We've done our conference, which is Raccoon River. We meet basically weekly on that, if not more, and talk about how they're putting together some of their information. And then we also do it with the AEA. So the thing that I like about it is, I like to, to get these groups together and then we can talk over what's going on and see, you know, what's working, what's not working and what will work for us.
Are these set meetings at these weekly meetings or are these just kind of touch bases? I mean, is this like Tuesday at nine o'clock in the morning, meeting with?
On the, on these so far, they're starting to lessen now as we go a little further into this, but it was like for our AEA, it was 10 o'clock, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Raccoon River, it was basically Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 11:30. The one that we talked about with our Story County, we had met before Story County, but this one for the matrix, we just started and what we're doing is, because everyone wants the same thing, we're going to be meeting weekly on that.
Thank you. No, that's a good question. So that, that's really, that's the nuts and bolts of, of leadership and communication right now. Now, we know, once again, to add, this is fluid and we're going to be, we're, there's going to be things that we add to this or maybe that we're like, oh, we're kind of done with that part, but we will continue to review this and, and add as we need. The next committee, the, the real, first real committee was infrastructure. Infrastructure deals with the organizational structures and the day-to-day operations. It's really about our system as a district. How are we doing things as a district? And then that funnels down to buildings. There were three big ideas when you think about infrastructure. First is determining the current needs and capacity, developing, implementing and supporting professional development, and then the plan for organizational needs. Andy Eckert and Jason Holton were our co-chairs for that meeting and they're just going to go over kind of a brief overview on that. I don't know which, I didn't ever ask you who was talking, I'm sorry.
Hi guys, I'm going to talk here. Good to see you all. You're pretty small on my screen, so I can't really see you too well, but it's good to see you anyways. So yeah, we have some really good members on our committee, a lot of people that you actually see here, I used to have an angel there, but we had some good input from a couple of different areas, input out of state, families and then teachers and staff. And so we kind of looked at technology, what technology do we need for sure for the staff? And then also technology for the students in, in case of a remote learning situation. So we looked at delivery management systems and the hardware that's needed. And so we went ahead and did a CSO for PK through two and Google Classroom three through 12, which Google Classroom was being used for the last few years for most of the teachers. So the CSO one is more brand new for the PK through two. And then the hardware, we're going to continue with our Chromebooks, but it's kind of cool because we're going to give those touchscreen Chromebooks for the PK through one, which I think is going to be a really cool thing and a nice thing for, for them, whether they're doing remote learning or in the, you know, brick and mortar. All right? So that's technology. There's some support stuff that we're going to do there. Jason's going to set up a help desk. Chime in here, Jason, if you want to, if you want to, but he's going to set up a help desk, online help desk, so that we can get tickets and we can track that stuff a little bit better and easier and then hopefully respond, you know, pretty quickly in that And then you can see here, we have the educational review process. So this was kind of a cool deal that came out of that, our, our committee, kind of a step-by-step process on, on approving applications that are going to be logged in by students. And so that allows us to make sure that the applications that our students are using are PRA and COVID compliance and of course they're good products for our students to use. And then we potentially won't have as many products being used, so hopefully there's kind of a, a vetting process so that we can minimize the number of apps, especially if we're online, doing online learning. Because we don't want to have, we don't want students to have to use basically the same type of program and have to log in multiple areas. So that was kind of cool. And then some accessibility review there too, so that we can make sure that we have compliance for accessibility, sight, hearing, things like that to, to help our students with these. And then you can see here, we have, I'm going to go down to the, even accessibility, so we did kind of just come up with, just kind of a plan for that. Mr. Holton, the administration is going to kind of head wad, make sure everybody does have internet access and remote learning. Now, just hear me say remote learning a lot because we did focus on that. If we go to more of a hybrid or a brick and mortar type situation, obviously things aren't going to need to change as much or anything. So a lot of things that we focused on were online. Some of these things though, aren't going to be able to be used very well in a situation where we have like a hybrid model where some students are online some of the time and things like that. So a lot of things will be able to be used in that situation, but we are talking about a lot of online remote learning situation. There's the asynchronous versus asynchronous learning that we talked about, so just kind of an overview of that. The curriculum committee really did a really nice job of talk, you know, kind of figuring out how to do synchronous versus asynchronous learning correctly. So we just had some overview on that. Again, the infrastructure committee is very high level, right? We talked about things from the district level on down, just kind of processes, procedures, rules for the buildings to follow, the teachers to follow. Just kind of a quick little note of that one. The technologies, families that kind of hit a little bit, we're going to give them Chromebooks and stuff, but we're going to use Google Classroom, CSO, we're going to make sure that families have access to that to help with, with the learning, especially if we do go online. And so we're going to give them user names and passwords as much as we can there and if they need to get those reset, they can do that. And then the hardware, we want to try and get that hardware sent out to families before school starts if we can. I think the administration's going to try to help if they can, but that would be kind of nice so that they can kind of learn how to use their programs, or use their hardware programs for. And then there's logistics for paper materials. So we got a setup to get paper materials out to families who are going to be staying home. So this might be a situation where families are just quarantined, might be a situation where families are actually sick. And so we kind of wanted a system that could get paper and pencil, but we want to make sure that that's only for need, for students that definitely need paper and pencil for a special needs reason. We want to keep that to a minimum and try to use, you know, the online tools that we have for our families. Okay? So you can kind of look at that, some mailbox setup, it's kind of a cool idea, idea of middle out of delivery drivers for some other families that can't pick them up. Video conferencing will just require two staff members on video conferencing and they will not be recorded. We'll use Google meets because we're kind of a Google school, we'll also use Zoom if we need it. There are some tools in Zoom that are kind of nice to have, like this, Google, those two software for doing that type of thing. Attendance there, we'll push out attendance every Monday. This is all, I should preface, this is remote learning only. Okay? If we are in a hybrid schedule or a early schedule, we won't have remote, we won't have to worry about attendance, attendance would be taken when these kids are there. But we'll push out assignments, it's just in the gradebook and the teacher will mark that as attended or not for the students for that week then. So you can kind of run through that and of course let us know if you have any questions on that, but it's a pretty good system, I think, if we're, if we are remote learning. And then teacher-student interactions there, we will have required weekly interaction with, with the, with our homeroom students, the teachers, homeroom students will have weekly interactions just to make sure that it's, there's something more beyond the assignments piece of, of school, right? And so we'll make sure they're doing okay in, in multiple ways, school, social emotional, things like that. And then there's some staff expectations here. So the first one is that the teachers will just make sure that they're doing what they do, right? And doing it well. And so that's just, there's not any, not a specific time they have to work or anything, they just need to be flexible enough to be able to do the work, but they need to be smart enough, you know, about shutting it down, so that you have a good work-life balance. We need to work with professional learning communities, they work with administration of meetings, make sure they make meetings and stuff, but we're in a online environment. But the hybrid you can see there is just kind of same as onsite learning more. And then professional development, so we want a professional development on the use of the tablets and Chromebooks, CSO and Google Classroom, those are the ones that we're really focused on and that's sure going to be a lot of teachers out there to go out and learn other things, like for instance, like Screencastfire or some kind of video capturing software. And so we have a resources website that the curriculum committee created, so they'll leave it in the chat and share, or just talk about that real quick. And so you can kind of go through those goals and kind of see the professional developments that is pretty robust and some good stuff there. In the case of prolonged absence by teachers, we had to have some set up for that or some ideas for that. So we're going to have a partner teacher, we're going to make sure to bring in administration and instructional coaches or whatever we need to make sure we kind of can help in that situation, see if the teacher can do somewhere while teaching, even if we are brick and mortar. And then we'll do some data gathering in the end to make sure that everything's, you know, goes best as it can be, make improvements as needed. So we'll use resources and mean survey to make sure, most of the times we'll be here, make sure that we're on track with doing everything as well as we can, I guess, in certain situations. So that's the instructors section. If you have any questions, let me, Carrie or somebody else here.
I think that, I think you guys did a great job. I, I read this earlier today and I sent Carrie and Lindsay a email, it's excellent job, excellent work.
So just so I can fully too, whatever plan we go with, the one-to-one, PK through 12, it's going to happen no matter what? That's kind of what we're saying? I mean, it doesn't matter on the hybrid or in school, out of school, whatever, it's going to be one-to-one? What, what does that look like? I mean, what do we have to purchase? Do we know?
Jason, can you answer that right?
Yeah, Jason wants to go ahead.
So we had already planned on purchasing new high school Chromebooks. So those are already in, that was already budgeted for, out of a couple of dollars out of the 19, 20 school year budget. We need to purchase the tablets, the Chromebook tablets for pre-K one after July 1.
Okay. And that will be if we are, if, if we just are here, which is, that's what we want to be, it would be like normal, I mean, it would be like those devices would stay at school for pre-K five and the same thing as always for six through 12. But if we have to move to one of those other models, then, then, and the reason that, I, one of the things about the devices for the younger kids, through the, the surveys of teachers, students and and parents, having a common device across the board for the teacher is vital in, because I don't know if you're using something, a device, I don't know what it's going to look like on your device. And I think that was something that came up just through the conversations of infrastructure. It's like, oh my gosh, some of, I mean, we're like, what does it look like in a Chromebook? I mean, I don't, in my role, I don't really use a Chromebook. But so what that has come from is Jason has made sure that all of the teachers that their students that they teach with Chromebooks, those Chromebooks, each of those teachers has a Chromebook now over the sun.
They're all staff.
Yes. Because.
Will.
Will, yeah. Yes. But you do have, you do have the high school.
High school, yeah. Aren't they like iPad-ish for the little kids? For the little kids, it's a tablet. It's a touchscreen tablet. So it's not a, you know, Chromebook. It's more of like an iPad-type.
Yeah, which, you know.
Did they come with a stylus, did that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. And they don't have any trouble with them either, I mean, other than.
They can teach adolescent Chromebooks.
I would highly recommend though, if we have the funds for it, is Erin has had one for a long time. And the beauty part about her is when she's done with it, she throws it. But they made, they made cases around for those, that she actually throws them over down the steps and it protects those machines. And so we may think about, I mean, they're indestructible essentially from dropping and it won't help the witness, but at any rate, I'd highly recommend depending on funds. Works really good.
So are there any other resource, additional resource? You know, we talked about Chromebooks are already in the budget. We talked about internet accessibility, I mean, partner teachers, substitute teachers. I mean, is there any, like, as we go through these, I'm trying to understand are there additional resource needs?
The substitute teacher is one that we are proposing hiring a sub for if not someone across two buildings, someone for every building. So it's like, it's not a long-term sub, but it's a sub that would report every day. And depending, because we know, I mean, what we're hearing about this virus is it could affect our teachers and our support staff maybe more than our students. We don't know.
What we had at the bank, Carrie, that sounds like what you're talking about, is we had people that we were paying to be on call.
That's, that's exactly, and so if that person would be like, kind of, we called it, and I think Gail actually coined this, like a triage. So Jeff is gone, but this person that can step in knows the system of that building well. So then that person can step in for Jeff for two days. And if we have to get a long-term sub, then we're going to get a long-term sub because we want, we want that person to be that, that can really connect across buildings. So that's, that's where we're, we have, another thing we have done is we have reached out to our subs to find out who is, who's willing to sub during this time and who said, oh, I really, take me off the list, but when this is over, I want to come back. So what was.
Do we not, do we not line item subs on our budget?
We do.
And what's that number? Is it one sub a day? I mean.
No.
Well, you know what I mean though? I mean, we already had a line item in there. So like Tyler said, how far are we off of that line item? Do we really want to do it?
Oh, gotcha.
So I think that might be, my question is just, and I don't know if you want to wrap them all in there, what are the additional expenses?
Yeah.
Not to cover tonight, but.
Yeah, no, that was in the next.
But having it under each category is kind of helpful too, you know? We should have a dollar sign on every one of the sections to be like, okay, what are the additional funds? And then we just brought those to Gail.
I think the biggest dollar sign is probably going to be under health and safety. The thing about infrastructure is when we're talking about, okay, for the devices, we had the funds, we used this year's, now the new year, 2020, 2021 for our tablets, right? And we also bought those for those teachers as well. Because if the teachers don't know how to use them, they're not going to be implemented in the classroom. So that, we also went to that expense. Our PD dollars, we're just allocating that a little bit different because right now our PD, if we are even, if we have to go into a remote or a hybrid model, we've got to have PD to focus on that. So that's where, instead of focusing our PD dollars one way, they're going to disfocus another way. So in that respect, except for the sub issue in under infrastructure right now, there's not a lot of extra cost there.
Is there, and I don't need to go into detail here, but you mentioned, Andy, you mentioned that internet connectivity for homes that don't have any, I mean, is that going to be an additional expense or?
Jason, where are we, how are, I mean, we don't have a lot of people, but.
I know I heard from somebody today, we heard from somebody today that simply does not have internet access. What I don't understand, does that mean access to their home, you know, or just not?
It's not like, no. The way I read it is they didn't want it. I read it, but they didn't want it.
We had from the parent and student survey. Now, it's important to know that when, from the parent and student survey, we did not collect emails from that. That was done anonymously. Right off the top of my head, I want to say that we had four students, four students that said they did not have internet connectivity at all. And then the number for parents was a little bit higher. I want to say it was maybe eight.
Have we reached out to them over the phone too? I mean, have we been hearing from them on that?
Yes, we surely can. And we also have information over the closure time of, we had people that responded through our family needs survey too. We know who those people are. So yeah, we are doing that.
And it would look a lot like the IEP considerations, you know? If it's just not feasible, then we just have to be like, well, you're in the small group of, we're going to include you on the, on friends learning if we can't find work.
I would say, as a member of this group, and Andy might tell you differently, but I kind of listened, it was more informative for me than I think I provided help. I think there's several things that we are doing that regardless of this situation, just make us better. I think the one thing that I think Andy called out was the review of apps that people use. It's easy to just toss something out and they, you know, hey, this is great, send it out to a kid. Even more rigor around that, that's going to make that a much better process, make sure that those are the appropriate apps that we want to use.
And that has to be a process we carry forward. Whereas we do that regardless of what, I mean, that'll just be something we do now. It's part of our, how we do business.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see that privacy on there because I think that's huge.
I think so too.
Any of these apps, they're going to want them on, so we got to make sure that's something that.
And that is a part of the review to understand, do they collect student data? And that's part of the criteria of whether we can or can't, I believe.
And I think to, I would say to all of your credit, I mean, by saying, hey, bring other people in, not that we wouldn't have done that anyway, but by saying, hey, bring other people in, that's really where that conversation came from.
Some of the technical.
Yeah, some of those technical things from our high state technical people, you know, are, you know, into, anyway, just an FYI.
So just, and of course the one-to-one.
Looks good.
Any other questions for infrastructure?
No.
Great group.
It was fantastic. I'm going to tell you what, Andy and Jason were fantastic co-chairs of that. They really were, very, very organized and did a great, great job. Lindsay's going to speak to help and take you.
Real quick, sorry, my last question on this professional development.
What'd you say?
Professional development, that's one of the staff.
I did put that up.
You put it there, okay, that's all. All right. Perfect, that's, I'm done.
Okay, we're going to go on to health and safety. Again, I think the health and safety group, we had a daunting task in front of us and it really worked well. I can't say enough good things about the committee that we have. In just a minute, I'm going to turn some information over to, or turn it over to Lynn and Ashley, but I want everyone to realize that what we know today could change from what we know two weeks from now. It's a very, I think Tyler said that one, maybe when he came in. It's a real fluid situation that we're dealing with. But the thing that I think that this committee really focused on is what is the, we're looking at, we want to make sure that it's, the health and safety of our kids coming back is a big priority. So Lynn or Ashley, or I don't know how you guys are going to do it, if you're going to team it, whatever, would, who would like to talk?
Lindsay, I'm sure it's going to shock you, but I'm going to talk.
Thank you, Ashley.
You bet. So our committee have representation from all the different buildings, as well as Mr. Beecher and Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Posetti from the Advent team, as well as Laura Metzger, representing the nurses, and Dan Wright bringing his expertise for custodial, as well as Deb Purcell for food service. And then we had outside, beyond our school, community involvement from Gail Brown, bringing her lens of expertise of infectious disease, as well as Marcy Wilson with being a healthcare provider and actually caring for people with COVID every weekend. So that was our committee. We met weekly as a full subcommittee. And then as each week came about, you know, like Mr. Beecher said, guidance was constantly changing and fluid situation just in this time period, we dug into the work in sub-subcommittees and then brought back necessary information to our subcommittees as a whole. The return to learn document guidance from the beginning, from the state, charged us to look at workplace safety, mitigation strategies, and then monitoring the health and safety of staff and students and community. And you'll see those things reflected in the document that Carrie put together. I'm not sure to what depth, I know Andy went in depth with each one of his items. I'm not sure if that's what you would like me to do. I'm happy to do that. You know, the big things that, we were talking about budget and things like that, and Carrie said all the money is going to go to health and safety, while cleaning and things like that. As you can see, we kind of lay out the cleaning protocols for educating our custodial staff as to when and what PPE is necessary to keep them safe and then how often materials, and then the mitigations. That's kind of the first, I don't know if we need to break it up into each or if you'd like going to keep going.
Keep going, I think that's fine. Don't, anything, we can ask.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead. I know you're bashful, but go ahead.
Yeah, right. So you can see we have the mitigation inventory there. You know, the thing that we don't have, we know how much we ordered as far as cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer, masks, gloves, any of those types of things prior to this. There wasn't a magic matrix for what it is we should order. You know, we were long awaiting this mitigation inventory to seek some guidance. So we took the information we have, we tried to take that into consideration with the amount of increase in cleaning and did our best calculations as to what we would need to order for supplies needed. Then the next portion, to speak to health and safety, our Mr. Beecher spoke to us earlier about the Story County superintendent and nurses getting together for that matrix for different things. We also have the flowchart for our illness because we know that a fever and a lot of the symptoms of COVID can be lots of different things. So we wanted to be really clear as to what our protocols are. Story County Public Health has advised us right now to increase our attendance policy to be reflective of our current state of COVID-19 and not return fever-free for 72 hours as opposed to 24, which has been, we have that stated in there, but that will be a big change. As well as gathering that information, you know, Andrew asked what percentage of kids might be home and those, we have the start to those questions in registration, asking if there are kiddos with underlying medical conditions as well as household member with those, with the assumption then that we could call those people that said yes and then ask them what their intentions are based on that data from registration. As far as mitigation, our stance has been if we could, social distance is our first and then if we can't maintain social distancing, plexiglass barriers as appropriate, and then face coverings being recommended. Sanitizer available in all of the places, as well as rethinking some of the materials we use. You know, soft surfaces are not able to be cleaned as well, books, you know, they're recommending that you don't wipe down a book, that you quarantine a book. And so we're getting things like that in place. And then the policies for reducing the stigma of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, having COVID, those types of things. And then lastly, employee rights and backup plans for if our staff or students are sick.
Ashley, can I add one thing? I was talking to Lynn today, she stopped in the office. And just to show you how things are changing, I think that at one time, wasn't it Carrie, that we said it was going to, for quarantine of books, it was going to be 10 days? And I know Lynn's in there someplace, she said it's now 72 hours. So things are changing so much. That's what I want everyone to realize, that when we're looking at this today or next week or three weeks from now, it could be different. But I don't want to steal your thunder, Ashley, go right ahead. That was just one that I thought was really interesting and we added that to our information. So thanks for whatever Lynn's had on that group there. Anything?
I actually have, I don't know, Ashley, were you done going through that? I've got a few questions and I don't want to.
Yeah, I think we could go on and on if we got into the details of it. So I think, yeah, I think I am done.
I didn't want to, I wanted to break. Okay. So, and I might just kind of go through these rather quickly. For the guidelines, on the second section, we have Story County Public Health, IO Department of Public Health, CDC, IO Department of Education. Have we considered adding the AAP? That has very similar, actually, very similar guidance with that and it has a nice part where it breaks down by age of.
That's a really good question.
It recommends guidelines for.
Add who?
AAP. American Pediatric Association.
Yeah, they both mentioned that and I hadn't seen that. When we were meeting as a team, we did not, that was, that was not something that was necessarily shared. But that's not a bad idea and we actually, we have it. I think that it was shared with some of us that was out there.
Something to consider, I read through it and it actually gives, you know, sometimes there, it does suggest mitigation strategies there, not just back full-on, but it does suggest a 3-6 part. It was a good resource and maybe something that group could look at to see if they wanted to.
But that's the question, because we figured that question was going to come up tonight.
Can we just, I think that's.
Just say that?
No, but I think it's a good point to maybe get everybody's input because with some exceptions, you could argue that some of what we heard in public forum was completely contrary to what these organizations are suggesting, right? So I think it's really important where we come out as a school district, as this committee and as the board, do we stand behind the recommendations here? Because we have to have something that we stand on, right? And so I think it's good to say, well, what about pediatrics? What about this? At some point, what is it that we're saying, we're following these guidelines?
Exactly.
And then we've got a very solid base from which to make decisions.
Well, and know which ones conflict and, you know, there's conflicting, there's conflicting guidance and so we just have to be prepared.
We have to look at that and I think this group could potentially take a look at that.
But there wouldn't be any one of those, John, that would say COVID is not real.
Right.
Right?
And it doesn't say that in this one either.
No, but I was, the only thing is our first speaker was referencing that document. So I just want to make sure that.
They did, but they didn't go into where Deb was talking about, there are mitigation strategies in that pediatric document.
It is absolutely true, they say it is best for kids to be in school. However, the last 19 or so.
I don't want to go into the details, I just want to say on the important issues where we know there's conflict and maybe not.
Resolve it.
Maybe not particularly on health people, but mental health people could be like, well, that might look a little different than that, you know?
But my point being is we've got to have something.
To talk, say that's.
Or our basis, right?
This is our source.
Fully agree.
Otherwise, we've got five opinions and forty opinions.
And I'm not saying either or, I'm just saying be kindness to the ones that are going to draw the most attention and be like, well, we focused on this guidance.
Well, and if we, I think I, we have to be consistent. Because if we keep flip, if we would flip-flop, well, now we're going to do this one, now we're going to do this one, then what are we following? I don't know, that's just.
It's an excellent point. It's an excellent point.
I don't know. And maybe that's not where you were going.
Ashley's raising.
She's being very patient.
Yes. No, it's okay. All I was going to say was that the American Pediatric Association was kind of late to the game sharing out information. So we've had all of our information based on CDC, Public Health. So we've had all of our information based on CDC, Public Health, and from the Department of Ed. And their guidance, although I agree, has some great points in it, was not part of our discussions and trying to get this plan done. But I think it also highlights how fluid the situation is.
Absolutely. And like by no means did I mean like, wow, we missed one, but just like, hey, here's something else. Let's add it in and take a look at it. I have just two other questions and I think these are easy. I had, there was a question from America that emailed that I want to just ask. And it has to do with the 72 hour piece. And what if a child is sick, but they are dying, they're confirmed that they're not COVID? Is that 72 hours apply anyways? Maybe you don't know that yet, but that's something to think about. They, they asked if that 72 hours was just if you were COVID or for all fevers.
We were working with our nurses and I know that Laura is working with Story County nurses to have those things reflected. So like, for example, if your kiddo has a fever and you go and then they have strep and they get antibiotics and they're on it for 24 hours, then they can normally come back to school after that 24 hour period, making sure that our policies are reflective of things like that. Is that kind of what you're speaking to Deb?
Yeah, it was a question I just wanted to ask on behalf of someone who I submitted.
Do, do we want to, I know that we've talked, we talked at great length about temperature taking and that that is one of those things that is recommended from Story County Public Health and CDC. What we are proposing is having those temperatures taken at home.
That's what I need to do.
Just because, I mean, not that, but right now where we are.
Take 1,500 kids, that's, that's the challenge.
So we would ask that the temperatures, staff and students are taken before they come.
So I think I, I would fully agree with that. To your point about starting to get into details, if you back it up, do we expect that we will have a clean matrix of if this, then that sort of almost a flow chart? Because I know some were expecting, was it the Department of Ed that had kind of controversial on Thursday, right? And they didn't, they basically said, well, it's up to the local. And then I think Lisa from ISB came out and said, well, they're going to come out. So I'm assuming that there will be some more, some, either a flow chart or some metrics of, you know, not only at the individual level, but at the building level. Okay, we've had a COVID in the building. What, what do we do? Do we continue or is that student home and, you know?
That is what's going to happen with the work that the superintendents, the Story County superintendents are doing. The Department of Ed at this time is not going to come out with that documentation, which we were hoping that they would. So that's where the coming together with all of our local superintendents said, how, how, how should that look for us? And, and using those resources at the county level and our school nurses as part of that discussion to create what you just said.
Yeah, and it's evolving in the banking side too. So, so, so we have, you know, if you get in, so we have 300 employees and we've had employees that have it. And, and when it first came out, it was if you have an employee that tests for it, you need to go back with 14 days of everybody that they've had in contact with. And then they need to be quarantined for 14 days. What it's morphed to from some of the county professionals is you got a 48 hour look back. Anybody that you've been within six feet for, for a sustained period of over 15 minutes. And so that was, that was the last go. And so it'll be something along those majors and then, then you're quarantined for so long. And then what do you do with the people that they've identified, you know, that have been in that 48 hours and you send them home for 14 days?
But we expect and it'll continue to change. But then at some point, right before we open, this is all right, here's what you got to do. So it's not a, okay, now what do we do?
Yeah, it has to. So you do this, this situation this way and then the similar situation a different way. Like there needs to be some, if you have some predictability, I know in a very unpredictable state.
And every day you just, it's going to be a little different deal that you have to address and get comfortable with, we're going to do the best we can to apply these procedures to what we have. It was really interesting to hear the county superintendents and, and nurses and stuff like that. We're all wanting the same thing. Everyone wants to have that matrix so we know when to move. Because if we don't, it's like the Wild West. This school district will do one thing. This school district will do another and this one will do a third thing. So we got to be together on it. It's just getting that, what Tyler was asking about, is getting that together. And we will.
Ashley, my last question was just where do food programs fit in? So like if you're talking, and maybe this is the wrong subcommittee, but like if you're, if you're a hybrid or remote, then you, you know, we provide meals for kids, similar to how we did at the beginning of the year. Would that be a part of what this group figures out? Or I know Deb Purcell was on this group, so I imagine she's, she's been thinking about this, I'm sure, nine days since then, but.
Deb does have multiple plans put together for various scenarios. And one of them being a hybrid situation where if when kiddos left or let's just say that they were in school on Tuesday and Wednesday, when they left Wednesday, they could take lunches with them that would be for Thursday and Friday was one of our options. But I maybe get for Mr. Beecher or Lynn could speak if it was any different. But I know she had at least four different scenarios.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like we, we're kind of, I don't want to say on the hook. That's a bad word to use, but we, we need to, I think, provide those, those food, whether you are in this building or not.
And there's legislation coming down on that too. So I don't know what the specific legislation is. But I know Deb is, and like Ashley said, Deb has four different models and we're watching very carefully.
I have no doubt she has.
She does.
I mean, I know she's, she's been very passionate about this the whole time. But I, I guess just understanding where that fits and maybe as that develops, making that known is going to be helpful to some of our parents.
Well, yeah, like if we're all in session, what does the lunch hour look like? That would be in a room or how that going to work?
We're, I will tell you, the building principals are working on that. Thinking about the social distancing aspect of it though. How can we, because we can't, in social distancing, there's no way we could get all of the kids, even in a hybrid model, we couldn't get all of the kids that were in the building at the lunch. So we're going to have to think of what, how can we creatively look at that? Another thing is with lunch, I think everything has to be disposable because you don't want to be passing those, you know, any germs on. So and I know that Deb's been working on that as well. So all of those parts and pieces are things that are in the back of everybody's minds as to, okay, how is that going to look?
Kind of just back to costs again, like we, on the first topic, you know, we're not looking at two things here. One, you got transportation, which is a whole other animal. And then you've got obviously the social distancing, which how do you do it? And then the plexiglass barriers. I mean, that's what that too is where, what's needed, how much, where? I mean, that could be a small animal or a large animal.
We, we have right now, like if you would walk into our office, we have a prototype, if you want to say of what we're looking at for our secretaries, how that would be set up as far as a barrier. The building principals, when one of our meetings, we set up how many they would need. Now, this would be something that maybe if Deb and I were sharing this table and it was, I don't know how long it is.
I'm going to go get that one.
Okay. If, if this was not a six foot table and Deb was over here and I'm here, we've, they know how many plexiglass barriers. And that's a fancy name for what she's going to show you. Ours is, ours is going to be safe, but it's pretty, I mean, it's some wood stands here and plexiglass to make sure that we're not doing things, transmitting any type of COVID. The thing that is also, we bought some foggers, misters for our buses. They can be used in the classroom. Here we come.
So this will be every class, between kids on the desk or this?
This would be like we're small group. So we are going to try not to have, we are, the way we figured out social distancing, we think we can get kids at one at a table or pending others. But if they're doing small group work or they're doing collaborative work, they, we could have this barrier in front of that.
Yeah, what was it? Probably approximately 20?
It was like $15.
Was it 25 per building though that they were looking at?
25, yes. 25 per building and they're approximately $15. Was that right?
Something like that.
Right now, yes, that's what we're saying. Because you, what we're thinking of right now is that would be used if we had to go to a hybrid model, we still would need that, that barrier for any kind of small group work with teachers.
Okay. I added.
But we wouldn't use these if we're just doing, we got the green light and we're going.
We don't have to do any mitigation strategies.
At that point in time, we wouldn't be doing the six foot and all.
That would be, that's, I would, I would think.
Are we, are we concerned about availability of PPE or even just cleaning devices or cleaning supplies at this point?
Is Lynn on there someplace? Lynn has been, there she is. Thanks Lynn. You want to address that because you've been kind of the person that's been our, or actually either one of you, keeping track of what we're going to be ordering. As a matter of fact, we had a discussion today and I think we're putting down an order tomorrow possibly. You want to address that?
Yes, Dan Wright and I met with our representative from Home Depot Pro. And we sat down with him and went over our mitigation items and our PPE items that we are in need of. And what he was explaining to us and was sharing with us is that most of the suppliers have cut down the different kinds of items so that they can faster process items. So instead of having five different smelling Lysols, maybe there's two or one so they can do them faster. And he said they work with their suppliers right now so that if we order one type of an item and it's not available, they do have X number of suppliers of a similar item lined up and ready to go. So we're going to be working on putting those purchase orders together tomorrow so that he can get started on those. But he felt pretty comfortable we weren't going to have a problem getting supplies. We do have some on hand to start the year and we planned enough that can get us through at least the first three months. And then we can look back and see, are we ordering the right quantity? Do we need more? Do we need less?
Thank you.
One thing I would add to what Lynn said is that we're also trying to be mindful of things such as if we are going to have kiddos at the high school with four minute block between, that we want to get our fast acting spray in between, although we love to be able to use that in all the buildings all the time. If it's something that we know is going to be clean at the end of every day, then we can use something that has the time that it takes 10 minutes or whatever to activate and wipe off. And so we're trying to not only get the right products, but manage where they're going as well to get our best time. So I'm not sure if any of you have looked at like even different variants in Clorox wipes or if you type in the EPA number of what, how long it takes to actually dry in between. They can vary anywhere from two minutes between to 10 minutes.
Number, I put a thing up here for dollars, just the number of custodians?
Yeah, it talks about.
And mitigation strategies, obviously, if they were to get saved, but.
We're, we're good. I'll be honest with you, it's going to be a challenge for us when we're trying to look at, you know, if you go back to our routine cleaning, we're asking our custodians to come around every two hours and hit those, those door handles and wipe down those different things. Dan's aware of that. I, I think that that's something that we're going to have to keep in mind because, you know, every two hours and we probably have what, a custodian in each building?
One building, one in each building.
So it's not like we're, we're, there's a lot of people there. But that's something that, that we're trying to do. And then like the, the more cleaning like Ashley was talking about, but maybe if we do any type of maybe more depth cleaning rather than the wiping things down, that could be done at the night, after the kids are gone.
And I'm sure Dan can talk.
Well, just on more depth on that, so are we anticipating more custodial need or are we still assessing?
I think we should assess it because what, what I'm seeing is that that's going to change by the time school rolls around. What we're seeing is that on stainless steel, it doesn't last very long at all. And on hard tops, I think we're going to find some different information coming down. Kind of like you said, 14 days, now we're down to seven, now we're down to 72 hours. I think you're going to see some of this change, a lot.
It's going to be hard by keeping a tab on it.
But it's worth assessing. Yeah, I think, I think you have to have a plan, but I think you're going to see some different outcome.
Several of the speakers mentioned the toxicity of what we're using. Do we have anybody that's looked into the toxicity of what we're applying to all these surfaces and the health effects that may come from those? If, if anybody done any of that under the health and safety.
Beyond EPA approval?
Yeah.
Which by definition says they're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
One thing, are you suggesting beyond EPA approval?
No, I don't think you go on, but I think you can get stuff that's, we get stuff that's very, you know, that we, that does not hurt us in our restaurant. Because we, we don't have the wherewithal to watch somebody all the time.
Well, I just meant if there's something that's not as toxic perhaps.
Choose that over something that.
Right, right. I mean, I mean, I just know that some of that stuff, I can just smell it. I can tell you it, it might not kill me, but it feels like it's going to. It's this, and what I would characterize that is, is when you're in a swimming pool, an indoor swimming pool, and there's too much chlorine in the pool. I'd much rather swim in a saltwater pool. And the reason being is, is I don't feel like I'm getting doused in chemicals. And so I know it's not the right analogy. I'm saying they're both approved by the EPA and I've swum a lot, I've been swimming a lifetime. So I'm, I'm not saying that it's going to drop me dead. But if I could have something that's not nearest toxic or whatever, I want to default to those rather than we just order the Lysol. And I mean, I walk into a room with Lysol and I'm just like, where's my mask? So I want to just have that in there that we're not only afraid of COVID, but we're also afraid of, of toxicity of what we're introducing at a way higher rate. So it's one thing that we clean that, that or not once a week. But when we step it up every two hours, we're raising the toxicity above. And so I just want us to be mindful of that.
I put that on here for this committee, toxicity of cleaning supplies, what's best product for kids?
Yeah, yeah. And just keep it as low that kills what, what it is we're after.
It kills just COVID.
So Ashley, if we could go back to mitigation and my question is, I mean, I think you've got a nice job saying we've got to follow CDC guidance. Here's our, here's our priority list, social distancing, plexiglass barriers and face coverings. But how much conversation have you had with regard to different age groups? In other words, what does that look like for the elementary school versus the high school? And has there been consideration? It might have been brought up either by a speaker in the forum or one of the emails, but you know, more of a cohort approach like the daycares for the elementary versus some of these mitigation strategies? Or how, how much conversation, maybe specifically for elementary versus like the, the high school?
Yeah, I think some of that is addressed in the hybrid and how we, you know, that's definitely a place that all of the committees were working together. One of those huge pieces of overlap of how we have cohorts of kiddos and staggering times and things like that in regards specifically to masks versus face shields or when we wear them. Speaking broadly, we have laid out our mitigation strategies in that order that are, if we can maintain social distancing, then a mask would not be required. So thinking about kiddos getting into the building. So you might, that might be a place where you trust the mask to get to the classroom. And when you got to your spot where everyone, we've done lots of measuring and we have pictures of all the different buildings and how that could look for different setup versus like six feet apart. And having then kiddos be able to take masks off. And then that mitigation barrier like Carrie brought in a few minutes ago, having those at the teacher table and things like that when you would break social distancing that if you were on, and we've done that with our summer school program this summer currently. If they're behind a barrier and the teacher's on the other side, then the mask would not be required. I also know we've seen some different estimates and different things about face shields that for our younger kiddos, I know in the public forum, it was also brought up and we've talked about the importance of kiddos seeing what our facial expressions are and matching our words and especially at the elementary. And then like I said earlier, the American Pediatric Association giving that guidance now. We haven't had a lot of conversation around that other than. Do facials?
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't have young kids anymore. But if I think back and I think of a kindergarten room and I think of social distancing and masks, and I've got a sister that teaches kindergarten and her. and I think of social distancing and masks, and I've got a sister that teaches kindergarten and she's on it and she's being told that's what they're supposed to do and she's going, "Good luck with that." How are we going to do that? So, you know, you hear comments about, well, more of a cohort. Somehow the daycare centers are doing that and being successful. I don't know, I'm just, high school, okay, middle school, okay, intermediate, hopefully elementary, realistic?
That, I think those are really good, that's a good question Tyler. And as more information is coming out, you know, that's where the fluidity of this comes to play. The conversations around face coverings that we've had, like we, right now, we're saying that staff would be required to wear them because we know, I mean, at least I shouldn't say we know, what we're hearing is that that age group is important to wear those. Now, if I am, like I'm sitting here, you know, I don't have to wear mine. But if I broke that social, if I broke that social distance and I was coming over to work one-on-one with you, then I would put my face shield or face mask.
Face covering.
Face covering, gosh, thank you, Deb, we talked about that. And whether that's a shield or, you know, we talked about that, the shield so you could see your face. But that means that for staff and for students, however that, we end up playing that, that plays out for students, those mitigation strategies are the same. So I don't have, we wouldn't, there would be no expectation that somebody would have to wear one eight hours a day.
No, I just put on a note, if you will, that just about guidance or mitigation, sorry, use of cohorts, really changing maybe sometimes how things flow through a building, I think is maybe the gist of it. Do the teachers move? Do the kids move? You know, that kind of thing, I think is what I've heard. So if you don't, I just put that on as a note, like as something that maybe as we go further, we'd like to hear more about.
And those are things.
As another way to mitigate.
The cohort model, I know that at the middle school, Mr. Danielson is, you know, that's something that they're looking at and they used to do it that way. And then they, you know, then it went, I know fruit basket upset is probably not the best way to say it, but you go from one group and then your next group, you're all mixed up. So maybe we just need to go back to that cohort model during this.
Blow over.
Yes.
John?
That can't happen, that's, the high schools are different.
If you look on page seven, under the cleaning environment and custodial education, I know the sub-subcommittee that this talks about, all cleaning supplies will have a safety data sheet located where the items are stored, whether in the classroom, janitorial closet or kitchen. I agree wholeheartedly with you. I think this is something that we want to make sure that we're keeping track of because we're not just doing it, you know, once and that's done for the day. We're saying every two hours, something we want to take into consideration, but I know that.
And again, another example, and I appreciate that Lindsay, because, you know, one thing I do is I use soap and water. Because I know that it's completely effective on getting the virus and I know I've been using it my whole lifetime so I don't have to sit and worry about that. And so sometimes the simplest is effective and we don't want to overlook it. You know, do we really need to be using Clorox and soap and water will do the job? Now, obviously, different things for different deals, but at any rate, sometimes I think we get over that chlorine's better than soap and water and I don't believe that to be the case for our health.
Did we mention in here about like signs and stuff? Like I know we're saying some other models about things, signs up and things like that, about encouraging.
Ashley, you're shaking your head, do you want to say something?
Yes, I mean, we had that in there with signage, you know, we kind of followed the lead from the guidance that they gave out for summer. And the CDC has a great set of resources that the signage for washing your hands, you know, there's superhero images that we could print and have, or if we wanted to put the Gilbert Tiger on all of them, we could do lots of different things that way. For summer school, we just printed ones that hit our age band for washing hands, using head of head and face masks or coverings, I guess I should say.
What's the overall comfort level with staff, with somebody's, I mean, I always say staff on the committee, we've obviously talked to staff, what's their overall just comfort level with these mitigation strategies? Have you talked to them?
We haven't done a specific poll, but just from my, just from the, you know, conversations, I think you're going to find a psych of community, I think you're going to find it across the board.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Probably the big issue just would be teachers that have pre-existing conditions, what's our plan for that?
Just real quick too, the Plexiglas things is, you know, I think they're great, but I also can tell you those are weapons at some point.
No, you're. Sharved edges. We talked about that.
Yeah, so just, I picture that in a first grade room and I picture it.
It's like your RSP.
Yeah, and so I said a lot of.
Jason?
Oh, I could hear about that.
I'd like to clarify, I wanted to make sure with the people in the meeting here, but that has the protective film on it, so the ones we'll actually have are going to be clear.
Yeah, I see corners, that's all I see.
Do you have a ladder we can borrow?
You know, I will tell you that when I had many whiteboards in my classroom for my kids, that's what my husband did. Because he said, "Oh, you can't have those sharp corners." He did robbery them for me, but.
The only thing that I would add, and this is later, a little bit further down the road, is just making sure, like when I see things like each student will have a small storage container, like what does this do to change our typical supply list? You know, just something to consider and I don't, we don't have to go into details about it now, but just, I'm sure parents will want to know, what do I have to get?
Well, I don't know, some of the.
Is that a supply list?
I think what it, for the beginning of the school year, what it will probably change is the community, the thought of the community pencils, the community this. Kids will have to have their own because of the, you know, the sharing. That's where this, that's where it comes into play. And we've talked about that, to be perfectly honest, we even talked about that with Math Mini-Vsops. You know, we can't just have the community, everybody go grab out of there right now. That's using the guidance that we know right now, that could change. So those are things we are talking about.
Thank you.
Good question.
I think that's pretty good for that section maybe. Listen, we're not done talking about this this summer, but I mean, for now, I think, is that, is that, anybody else have other questions? Thank you, Ashley, Lynn, thank you.
All right, our next group is, the official heading for this group is Iowa Academic Standards. We simplified that to curriculum and standards because this committee is really all around curriculum instruction. What does that look like during a hybrid or a remote learning if we would have to go to either of those two? The big ideas here are really assessing the initial student learning needs at the beginning of the school year, matching the curriculum to those student learning needs and then accelerating student learning using effective instruction matched to student needs. So that's really thinking where are students at, how do you get them, you know, thinking of that part, that in-between time. Lindsay Good and Carolyn Miller were our two co-chairs for this committee. So I'm not sure which two, which of you are speaking, oh, it looks like Carolyn has her hand up. Awesome, Carolyn.
Thanks, Carrie. Like everyone mentioned, really appreciate everyone on our team. We did have at least one teacher from each building, which was really helpful, especially looking at how breaking an assessment looked very different in each building. We did have a parent who is also on faculty for, with Iowa State University in the School of Education and Technology. And then we also had an ADA tech consultant, so it was really nice to have those different views as well. I'm going to keep my short and sweet because I know that you can read, but I just want to show you a few things here. We met, in terms of how often we met, we met once a week. But then we decided that we really needed to break things up a little bit so that we could use, basically use our time to the best that we could, so we actually made a subgroup. We actually did three different groups, so we did an MTSS group, we did an assessment and feedback group, and then we did a best practices group. And in each of those groups, there was either Lindsay, myself or Cindy in each one of those groups representing as well. And you can see a lot of the different things that we did was really trying to put together an easy-to-use toolbox for staff to be able to take a look at. So for example, if you look at the pre-assessment protocol, of course, we know that a lot of staff are already doing these types of things, but we also know depending on what our situation may look like, it might be nice just to have a section where staff can go to. And that's basically step by step for them. So the pre-assessment protocol, this is taking a look at where are students before we even start that unit. Again, just a quick, easy check for teachers at all levels to kind of see where students are, where they need to go, et cetera. Because we know that's going to look a little bit different when we return. The other thing that we worked on was if you look at the assessment table tab, in that tab, there's a large collection of digital tools that teachers can also use in assessment. And the reason we put this together is because again, it's that Snapchat. So teachers don't need to go out and look for specific assessment tools, things like that. We just wanted something easy for them to be able to find and probably use it easily. The other thing that we obviously focused on a lot is keeping things simple, but also have a lot of rigor behind a lot of things that we're utilizing to assess students with and looking at different ways to do that, whether we are a brick and mortar or if we are remote or if we are in a hybrid situation. So we had a lot of discussions about that as well. We also worked closely with the infrastructure group, so a lot of times we would either meet or discuss in our chair group meetings. And then sometimes we'd hold our own infrastructure and curriculum meeting groups because there were a lot of things that actually kind of went between the two teams. So that's just a little bit of a summary of some of the things that we did. You can kind of look through some of the specific things. A lot of ours was about teachers collecting data. And we feel like teachers do a nice job with that, but then also some tools to help them with this.
One thing, just to piggyback off of what Carolyn just said, people, you know, people are thinking, parents might be thinking, okay, there was a 12-week period and now we've had the whole summer. Are you going, are we taking five or six weeks to just reteach? No. That's where the, that's where the pre-unit assessment protocol piece, it's linked in there, it looks like this. But it's really doing that in real time. Where are, where, I don't want to, gap is probably not the best word to use right now, but where are some of those pieces that we have to fill in? But not just taking everything and filling it in at the beginning, filling it in in real time when those next units come up. And so that's where these protocols will come into play throughout whole U. So they did, they did a great job and they, we have protocols, we talked about this earlier with infrastructure. Curriculum and standards put together protocols that we can use regardless of where, I mean, that we will use, that are just, they're just best practice, they're good practice in being consistent across classrooms and grade levels, so.
Carrie, so let's say we're all online, just for the sake of making it easy, and then we put out these assessments and we have, you know, kids that are in different places. Would we then take teachers and put the kids according to where they're at rather than re-teaching it to? So I have 25 kids, 20 of them pass, 5 don't. And how do we do the remedial on the 5?
You know, I don't, actually, John, see that a whole different, lot different than what we do right now. I mean, we do, Carolyn spoke of MTSS, that's the structure, that's really the structure of the school day in general. Our curriculum that we use, our general education instruction should meet the needs 80% of the time. That's just what, you know, that's the percentage out there. So what are we doing, that's tier one. Tier two is, okay, what are we doing for those kids that didn't, you know, that just need that little bit of extra? So that, that's where that tier two comes into play. Well, we will have, we have tier two when we are bricks and mortar.
So no change?
It might look different. Now, the expectation, if we have to go to a hybrid or a remote learning model, our teachers will still be collaborating. They did it during the closure. I mean, they still have their PLC meetings. So we will still do those, we will still use that model. Some of them might meet together, some of them might be zooming, it just really depends. But the business of how we do business, meeting students' needs, that shouldn't change.
No, that's a good, that's good color because that's a question that I get as a school board member quite a bit is, what happens as a result of missing the 16 weeks?
Well, and that's where, you know, the work that this group did on really thinking about and putting together this pre-unit, pre-assessment protocol is really centered around that, it's that real time. If you just take, oh, we're going to just try to lump everything into four or five weeks, well, now you're going to have to do that, you're going to lose half or four or five weeks every single year. So really, it's thinking about where are those kids? Because some kids, just like anything, some kids are going to need more anyway. They're going to need that extension. We ask those PLC questions. What do we want kids to know? How are we going to know if they know it? What are we going to do if they don't get it? And what do we do if they already know it? So we'd still have to answer those same questions.
And that's built into the.
Built into the, it's built into the system.
Great information, thank you.
One thing, I have a question, I'm not sure if I'm even in the right section. I actually have, I have two and I think you're going to tell me to bump one. I have a question about remote learning for people who choose to do remote. You know, maybe we're on hybrid or maybe we're on onsite, but there's the number of kids that want to be remote. If there's a classroom going on, I think I kind of know the answer to this, but it's, will their learning be like video, like watching the class and session or will, you know what I mean, is it different? Maybe we don't, does that make sense, my question?
We talked.
Or will it be like others, we're talking about synchronous, asynchronous? Maybe we don't know that yet.
I would, I don't think we know that exactly right now. But listening to what families have said on the surveys that we sent, or the information that we have right now, a number of families, synchronous learning, which is real-time learning, didn't work very well. Because if I have to be on a Zoom for work, our bandwidth doesn't work for you to be on and me to be on. And so I think that the work Zoom trumped the academic Zoom. So we want to make sure that we, we don't want to lose out an opportunity because I can't get on at that right time. And remote learning looks different than a hybrid or bricks and mortar, just in the fact that if you're remote learning, you're not going to be on a screen from 8 to 3. We know that that's not good for kids either.
I just wanted to know, like if I, so the reason I asked is like, what if I was a parent that was wondering that? Should I be playing child at home or not? Is, maybe it's, is it safe to say, I shouldn't expect that I am just having a video experience in a classroom? Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair to say. I mean, we're not throwing any idea out the window, but.
Likely to be.
Does somebody have their hand up?
Carolyn has her hand up.
Yes, Carolyn?
I think that's a great question. And one of the things that we struggled with is figuring out if we do remote, what is something that we can do besides just providing that video, just like you said, because that shouldn't be the only way those students are able to get the information. The other thing that we talked about is the restriction of, depending on what that family situation looks like, that family may look like mom and daddy had the computers from 8 to 5 and students aren't able to do anything until after that time. So those were definitely some different discussions that we had. The other thing that we talked about is possibly providing some type of orientation for parents to come in because we already have heard some feedback about, well, I didn't really know how to submit this, she didn't know how to do this, he didn't know how to do this. But bringing parents in so that they're comfortable using, for example, the CSO or our Google Classroom so that the parents aren't feeling overwhelmed by that situation as well. We were thinking that it might be nice to have an orientation with different questions and some teachers kind of talking about what are going to be important aspects of that. Just, those are some things that we've also discussed that I didn't really bring up tonight, but like Kira was saying, we aren't really sure exactly how that's, we don't know what we're going to be doing for sure yet, but those are definitely some of the discussions we had.
And my other one was just, I'm thinking now, like, as I look back to the last spring, like there's certain parts of it that you just simply can't see, like you can't, there are times when I think one of my kids would struggle, really struggle with something, it's just not visible to the teacher that they're struggling. But maybe you see the finished work and you're like, okay, good job, do you know what I mean? Like, that's one thing that I guess, just as a parent, not necessarily even as a school board member, but as a parent, I'm curious about as we go forward, like, how do we, how can you keep that level of engagement and understanding? And maybe that's.
Well, but that also comes into play because we've heard. Well, but that also comes into play, because we've heard, I've heard parents say this, and I've heard teachers say this too. If we would have to start in a remote model, I, that, that brings some anxiety to some people, because there hasn't been a classroom community built at that point. Whereas when we went into this in March, teachers knew those kids. Now, we're talking about how do we do that? How do we, you know, we're gonna have to really use the teacher, you know, teachers talking across classrooms and the fact that, okay, I know this about John, I know, you know, those kinds of things. We have to, we have to, I mean, that's, those are things we're talking about, I should say that.
Thank you.
Carolyn has her hand up.
Sorry, really quickly, we do have some sample, sample schedules, depending on the grade level, where we're taking certain chunks of time for different kind of activities and how that would look, because we also talked about how a lot of our parents or teachers, they don't know what it should look like for their particular grade level. Because we didn't want, just like you said, we don't want students in front of it, the screen for extended periods of time. So we made some, Curie, I don't know if those are in that sheet or not.
No, they, I think they're in, they were, I think they are on the teacher website.
On the site.
And we didn't, we didn't link that in there yet, but we will. We can do that.
But let's also give some different ideas, just like you said, because, you know, when we're in the classroom, we can see if the student is struggling, we can see if they don't get it. So these were just some more, some tips, and also more of a schedule that would be helpful for parents to be able to help their student at home.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks. I don't think I have any more questions for the rest of the night, so. Next, next topic, or?
Is social, emotional, behavior, mental health, must be true.
You are now on the hook for the stickers. I mean, I'm just telling you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Yeah, our next group is social, emotional, behavior, mental health, and again, a great group, a lot of diversity here. I'm gonna ask either DeeDee or Melissa, the two co-chairs there, they're waving, they're excited, cannot wait to give some information. DeeDee, are you starting out then? Is that what you're saying? All right, let's go for it.
All right, if you can't hear me at the moment, we have, our, what we call our community, or our community, sorry, our community was really great. We had staff from every building, including teachers and instructional coaches, as well as book counselors. We were really fortunate to have two ADA staff on our team, and then as well as social workers that work in other districts, and they were able to kind of share what some of the other districts were doing. And then one of the things that we loved was having mental health professionals from our community that were within different settings, and I feel like their input was invaluable. We also were able to do some large committee work, and then share with our counseling team to make sure we had input from every school counselor as well, some of their feedback, which was, I thought was really helpful. Our meetings, we met weekly as a whole group. There was one group we didn't meet together, is we'll be real lucky to smaller groups, to really address the needs and gather resources specific to staff, students, and families. When we think about, I, as I said, I said, listening, so much of the carryover has come up. We were super fortunate to have a number of the faculty committee were the best.
Molly Lou.
I'm so sorry.
This is, this is zooming. Okay.
It's been so good this whole time. All right. So basically, that's with all of the other committees, we ended up having carryover with every group, which ultimately we're so thankful for, because we saw every group's key focus and importance on the social, emotional, mental health, behavioral health of our students and staff and families. All of it. When you looked at our overall goal, overall goal, with some of our, what the DE was really pushing out and saying, this is what we need to do, wholeheartedly agreed was, in this situation, was that we need to identify and address needs from our students, our staff, and families on a global basis. And I just want to say, one of the things we've done for that, throughout the whole culture, is the Family Need Survey. Not just one example, a way that we work to stay connected to families, to better understand what they can use, and something I'm looking forward to continue using, one small piece right there. One of the things that was just talked about that I really wanted to touch on was the focus on relationship building, as we look at finding a way to make sure all kids are connected. That is something that our team really looked at, and regardless of if it's remote, hybrid, in person, whatever it looks like, that is one of the things that our team worked to tackle, was finding resources for teachers on the teacher website, as well as knowing that's maybe a focus for one portion of PD for teachers, to really focus on how to support students' social, emotional, behavioral health. So why, would you like DeeDee to get into specifics here, or as you guys hold it back, do you have any questions?
I don't, I didn't have specific questions. I think one of the biggest concerns that I, a, a big concern I have is, is just hearing about the strain that this has put on kids, but also teachers. And like, this is the beginning of the marathon, it's not the, the end potentially, and like, just making sure that there's support systems in place for the long haul, for our staff as well, of course, as well as our students and family, but this really is like a 360 issue, you know what I mean? It's everybody making sure that we can do that, and, I don't know, I'm sure more will come in the future here with this, but that's something that I think, this is an area that I'm, I'm just pretty keyed in on, maybe, or interested in hearing more about as we go.
The, the surveys you mentioned, I mean, I'm assuming those are anonymous, so those just give you an idea of, are there areas where we need more resources, or we need to make sure that people are aware of those resources, or talk just a little bit about, you mentioned some surveys.
The, so for students, or, sorry, any for staff, I want to say. Surveys, sorry, surveys from staff, that we did, sent out the survey from staff, and what information that did, and what continued to give us, is what, what is it that they're, I mean, what are staff level, where are staff at right now? What is it they're struggling with? What could they use additional support with? Just to give an idea, students check-ins, and just sort of additional, and one of the questions I really liked was, have you connected with a staff member, another staff member? And to pay the answer is no, but it might give us a good idea of who sort of used additional connection. Some people have great connections with people outside of school, and maybe they don't need that same connection, but we do wanna be aware of staff that may need additional connections.
All right. Do we have that, that same thing for, for students, that they have somebody that they can connect with, that they can report in as well?
Yes.
Good, good.
Yes, yes. One piece of that goes the family, student, family connection log, and it might look a little bit different in each building, but that's something each building will house, and they will keep track of connections, if, if, assuming for hybrid or completely remote, they will keep track of the connections that they have with students outside of academic. So have you had some kind of personal info with that student? Have you had a look at a check-ins that you've had with that student? And just making sure kids aren't falling through the cracks in getting logs.
Because I think we should even have that if, if we're all there.
Yeah.
Because I, I think students don't report it very well, and so if we can have some other connectivity besides just the students saying that, if we can also get that to, with the parents, because I think particularly in middle school, there's this chance of, I just need one good friend, and if I have one good friend, and if we have some way of assessing that outside of them saying, because they're not gonna be ready to fill out a bubble sheet to say, I don't have any friends and I feel like I'm all alone.
No, I think that's, I think this is another area where we've liked, you know what, because people have been apart for so long, we do need, we do need to gather that information.
It's gonna just have a whole nother, it was, it was huge before, and now it's, it's just so much more likely. Very good.
Awesome. Thank you, DeeDee.
Yeah, great report. Great report. Thanks, DeeDee.
Equity, is it?
Yes, equity is our last one, and just, just to get a framework of what is surrounded with equity, equity, sorry. It's creating equitable learning environments for all students. So we have to, in the context of equity, we're focusing on ensuring that all students have access to a free and appropriate public education. That's access to the curriculum, and access to all the supports needed to progress in their learning. Now, Jen Schormeyer and Melissa Skartweet were our two co-chairs for equity. I'm not sure who is speaking. Somebody, does somebody? Jenny, do you have your hand up? I'm sorry, mine, the way I am with the screen, I couldn't see very well. So Jen, did you want to go ahead and give us our, your little update?
Yes. First of all, Michelle Skartweet and I were the co-chairs, and then Stacy Edwards was our administrative representative. We had one elementary teacher and elementary intermediate chair staff member and intermediate teacher, two high school teachers, a high school teacher, myself, Stacy, two ADA staff, and one community member. That makeup included three special education teachers, one extended learning program teacher, and two classroom teachers. We met weekly as a large group, and then Michelle and Stacy and I met another time during the week to prep and get ready for those meetings. Stacy, Michelle, and I all joined an additional committee, where our guidance from the DE changed. Stacy joined infrastructure, Michelle joined curriculum, and I joined social, emotional, behavior, health. And our role within those committees was to look at their decisions made in that group with an equity lens, and make sure, and be an advocate for the student groups mentioned in the DE guidance, which included our special population, students with 504, our students who are at risk for, for various reasons, our English language learners, and our extended learning program students. We developed the plan, that you might be able to see, oh, this is on paper, so you're not going to see it right now, but we developed a way to track the supports that students may need, and at the meeting protocol, where, when a teacher, an administrator, and the pastor, whoever is involved with the meeting, can mark off the things that students might need, whether that is in the area of safety and health, accessing instruction that is appropriate for them, or instructional channels that need accommodations, or, oh geez, accommodations, or, someone will link me.
Modifications.
Modifications, thank you. Woo, totally can come up with that. We, they made a plan for what that would like to have that plan reassessed and evaluated, because we'll be doing the reevaluation, when it will occur, and to make sure that things that are in place for these students do go well. DeeDee mentioned the connection log, the student family connection log, that is something that will be important with our team as well, especially if we move to a hybrid or virtual system, because we will need to keep track of those kids that we already know are at risk, or know are 504 students that might be struggling at home. One thing with our hybrid model that our team discussed is also a full chart, where we went to virtual or hybrid, some of the students in our population, equity population, may need to come to school more often than our non-specialized groups or non-504 kids. So we looked at a way where we could sort through that, not necessarily as rock solid, if this, then that, but to have some sort of guidance when making those decisions. And that goes back to, it could be because of safety, health issue at home, it could be because they need specially designed instruction, or something else. So that was kind of the focus of our work, and we really focused on making sure every student, no matter what their learning style, learning abilities, home life, overt internet access, any of it, we want to make sure all of those students are getting that free and appropriate education.
I would say too, Jen, I think that the, the documentation that you all have created are things that, you know, we could put into place, and we, and bring some of these committees together. I know that we talked about in infrastructure, adding, does a family need, this is, I mean, just a little side note, but who need, this would be a great place to document, paper, pencil. Do we need those paper, pencil documents, so that these, this would follow kids? So it's, it's good work. Any questions for our equity?
Other than I just know that several of, a couple, one's beaten up in several of our email responses.
We're about that.
We're about that. So, I mean, it's very, it's very top of mind, and we have to.
But I think, I think, I think the other side of that, Debbie, is, is the IEPs will, will call out some of the unabilities of students, but the bigger side for us is gonna be the kids that are stoned and gifted. We gotta make sure we, we challenge them, and it might be in times like this that, you know, we don't go far enough, and I don't know how you measure that or anything like that. I think that's probably a bigger piece on this than the IEPs, I would think.
Well, I think when you say that, Jeff, I mean, that's why each of, I mean, if you look on our actual plan, you'll see how each numbered, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 subgroups, or no, 4 subgroups that are, that are identified just through this plan itself. And Jen alluded to this, I mean, using, and, and using documentation and data to say, okay, how, how are we gonna decide who does need to be here more than, if we, if we are in a hybrid, who would need to be here more than those A, B days? And, and that we're not saying it's one population or another, I mean, we gotta use the data to drive that. And if maybe, if they are here, let's, I'll just, let's say you're, you know, you're here on your A days, and that's really when you're getting your general instruction, maybe your B days are that specially designed instruction, or, I mean, I think, once again, we gotta think outside the box.
Jen, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so just listening to what Jeff said about the ELP, one of the things that's included in our documentation is a menu that teachers can use to extend the learning for students to our, as Curie referred to earlier, our PLC question, so the kids that already know it. That is something that Bonnie May, who was one of our committee members, provided us with, that tool that students can use, or, excuse me, that teachers can use to extend the learning in addition to what might happen if they needed to do specially designed instruction. So we tried to get both in that spectrum, because you're right, those students who were at home in March through May, that many are more ELP, I'm gonna speak to the high school level, are those kids that got bored and didn't want to interact, because this wasn't, they didn't see it as necessary, but we do want to provide teachers with ways that they can improve that. The other thing that I think, when I heard a lot of this during the public forum, is I, we have a lot of kids that will struggle with access if we move to a virtual system, and I think that is in our Family Need Survey, and we noticed that a lot during March, that there were more families that were picking up packets from school, and that's a group that I think sometimes gets overlooked, and we just need to be really conscious of, are we making sure to provide for those kids in whatever mode we're teaching?
And that's where those connections come into play too, Jen, so we know that. I think you're, you know, your family, student connection log across buildings and things too. I think we have to be very aware of everyone's needs.
Yeah, and even the economic of it, I, I thought the one speaker there saying, you know, the, the not having them in school and the economic difficulty that that creates is, is something on the equities scale, it just wouldn't have been on my radar, as, as far as it has a way more adverse impact than it does certain other families, and so I thought that was good information.
I have a last question that I could not decide if it fit in any category. Is there some of the folks on the, in the emails, and I've also heard just otherwise, you know, the fact that school is where kids go when their parents work, and when their parents are not stuck at home or can't be at home, what's the option? And I, I'm like, are there any, like, do we know yet? Has Kids Club mentioned if they're, like, they're planning to be in the fall, have you heard guidance, are we in connections with them at all about even those kinds of programs?
No, I haven't, from my standpoint, I haven't heard anything. I heard during the summer, but I have not heard coming in the fall. That's interesting, though. Yeah. But we, we can reach out, I mean, it doesn't have to be the thing of us, we can.
Well, you're on the sticker.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Right, because it'd be a sapping issue for them once we go to the hybrid. Okay, now look at all these kids that, that need a place to go.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions, maybe, at this point? This is step one, right? Or not step one, because there's a lot of work that has been done, I'm sorry. This is our first chance to look at it, first, first chance to have questions.
Nicely done.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Very well done. I, I would ask one thing, is that, I think this Jim Anderson was in here, can we send him survey results that we have?
We could, yeah, and we could post that, we could post that on, I mean, on the website if we want.
Because he made reference to the surveys, and we have them, and I know it wasn't a forum where you could talk back and forth, so I just have here, but point, point get them to him, because, you know, he's got some good points.
Oh, I agree.
And so let's get him our results, and like we talked earlier today, you know, let's do another. do another survey soon.
And hopefully those surveys can be, maybe, we have to be careful how you create them, but hopefully we can get a little bit more insight into them, like, if it, if we had this and that mitigation strategy, rather than like, you know, just, we can use those.
So, so I, I'm all for surveys, but I, I want to make sure before we leave tonight that we're really focused on what is our communication. My only concern about surveys is if it kind of leaves it open. I was shocked at all the emails that said, "We want kids back at school," and I'm sitting here going, "You don't think we do?" Right? Our communication needs to be, "We're bringing the kids back." And this committee is figuring it out, right? Survey, survey is important, but let's not throw confusion out there going, "Really? Are we going to be back?"
No, I want the same survey to go out that went out first, so we can measure the difference in the returns. So if we come back and we get that survey back, and it's now 80% of the people want to, want to go to school versus 48% yes, 49% unknown, and 4% no, so don't change the survey.
Well, I don't know if we want to get into that detail, but if I look at that survey, I go, which was my question? What are you talking about? Which social distancing? Right? So be, be careful what we're asking and what that leads to versus saying, "We've done all this work, we are bringing the kids back," that's what I'm hearing. If something unforeseen happens, we're ready for these other situations. But I was shocked that all these parents thought we weren't working towards bringing the kids back.
Yeah, no, but I, but I took it even, well, I, I agree with that, but they, they wanted it with less restriction than with more, which kind of surprised me. I thought it'd be half and half, but boy, those emails were.
I would say it was half and half.
You think?
Oh, definitely.
I was, I think it was way more of, "Let's go back to normal," but it doesn't matter.
But here's my point, here's my point, is we've got to be really clear, I, I think, if it's our intentions, we're bringing them back. That's the goal, that's the goal. Then let's worry about what that looks like, right? But right now, there was, there was confusion on both, and let's not talk about mitigation until we're really clear, we're planning to bring them back.
I think that's coming from the other schools that are starting to announce, you're getting, you know, Des Moines Publics and all this, you're getting like different variations of what they're doing.
Yeah, there's a lot of difference. Well, and, and I think everybody's of the mindset of, "I really don't believe it until we get there," but I think we have to be saying, given where things are at now, we plan to have, you know, 100% in classroom instruction. You know, I, I think that goes a long way, but, and then having, I think the part that's missing that I will be interested to see is the matrix. You know, what's, what's the, what shifts it into hybrid, and what shifts it to online? I'm going to be very, I think, if you want to know the communication piece that people want to know, that's what they want to know.
Tyler's referenced that.
I would, and I'm just going to say this, I, because I've had this experience with emails, and I've had this experience with texts and the newspaper, whatever, everybody is working towards the fact that we think school is the best place for these kids. But these messages are so easily misconstrued, right? Listen, that we did not sit here at this meeting and say, "They're coming back 100%." We just simply don't know that yet. We don't know. But that is where our energy is.
Our goal is, that's what we want. Everybody wants that.
See, I think that's important, to state that that's our goal.
That's our goal. I just want to be clear about that, because I didn't feel like you hear that.
My goal is, I would hope, my goal in my role is, I'm not saying, "Oh, I hope we're remote," or, "Oh, I hope we're hybrid," I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." But, but I, I personally, I, I don't have a crystal ball to know what it's going to look like in six weeks.
Exactly. And we know more than not.
Well, there's this danger of, I don't want to put it out there, because this has been so fluid that no one feels comfortable sending the message, because I might wake up and see the newspaper tomorrow of, you know, "Boy, we slammed it into reverse," and, you know, it isn't going to happen.
It just doesn't get, it's just not known. Like, I, I saw this thing that I thought, it helped put it in perspective for me, I don't know who said it, we are really solving a mystery. We don't have all of the pieces to this puzzle, right? We're solving a mystery versus solving a puzzle. With a puzzle, you know all of the pieces, you just have to figure out where they fit. There are still unknowns, there's things we don't know. So we make the best decision we can based off the best information we have today, and we weigh risk, and we do all of that, right? Like, that's the hard part about it. If it was a puzzle, I know people who can figure it out, but it's not that simple.
But I think we take a lot of the mystery out with our meeting tonight. Given, given where we're at, the plan would be 100% occupancy.
Bring them back.
And we're working on the metrics for when we go to hybrid and when we go to all online. It's not worked out yet, but that goes a long way to being, okay, I know exactly where they're at. They're planning on going, and they don't know for sure what the trips are for going down.
And it directs a lot of our time.
Oh, somebody's got their hand up?
Helping save them.
I think it goes, it goes a long way, because also have a choice of online.
So we have, we have a comment from the committees here, that the goal of the committees and the co-chairs and admins is for everyone to be back as normal.
Yep.
Okay, that was the goal of these committees.
And, and we know that, we just have.
And we also have to be attentive.
The only point there is, then that's communicated.
Right, right. Yeah, and we should have, we should add it on the front page of our school website, right? You know, you know. Yeah, our date, when is it, August 22nd? See you then.
And, and don't forget to listen to the parents who, so when we say that, don't forget to listen to the parents that said, "I, I don't think I want that." So when we say it's a goal with an option, right?
Oh, good point. We might have people that don't want to.
Come on, we can't, yeah, we've got to be, I think, we can't.
But this is what all this work was for, is to accommodate those that may not, right?
Exactly.
But, but the biggest question was, seeing to me, what I'm hearing is, for those that want to be here, is, are we going to be here?
Yes.
And the answer is yes.
I, I'm, I'm going to just throw a little wrench in that, just because, just to, I think that we also have to think about the health and safety of our staff as well.
Exactly.
And, and, and so I, it doesn't change what I said what the goal is, but that, that is going to, that could change as we move into this. What if we have a great level of teachers that are out sick? There's where the matrix comes into play, I know that, but I think knowing the fluidity of this situation and the unknowns that we really, like you said, it's a mystery. We don't know how this is going to affect us, but.
But again, I don't disagree, but that's the next level.
Yeah, no, I.
The top level is our goal, our intentions, as you stated, and everybody, our intentions are to bring the kids back.
Okay.
In a way that's safe.
I, you and I are totally on the same track, Tyler. This is, I'm, I'm thinking about what Deb just said. I also don't want to send a mixed message to families that, that, that I don't want them to think that we aren't thinking about safety, or the health, or the mitigation, or the, or the social distancing pieces of that. So, I don't know. Part of it, Tyler, is I have been eating, drinking, sleeping, this, this document.
And it's, and it's great, so that's, that's our, we've, we've now got, thanks to all of your work, that template in place, right?
Yes.
And it gives them something to refer to to start answering those questions, because they're going to want to see it in print. I hear what you're saying, but now show me, right?
Yeah, I, I have an aversion towards abnormal. What, what does that?
That's what worries me.
That's the thing that's misinterpreted 18 different ways from Sunday, but listen, I'm in agreement with you.
Well, and then you throw off the abnormal, and you just say, we.
I just want to make it clear.
Once this goes public and everybody, it's, it's.
It's below.
The sad thing is, honestly, of all these great information, I can tell you right now, what's going to talk conversation, it's going to be face covering.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the part that is.
But the question wasn't, from a lot of those, wasn't about that, it was, are we coming back to school?
Yeah, I know that.
And so then, we've said this, how many times tonight, in four weeks or six weeks, we're going to know more about, well, what does that look like? I'll tell you right now, where I, if it stands where it is today, I'm going to say, well, we need to, we need to protect those. So we're not going to throw all safety to, to the wind, because some people are saying, "I don't want to wear a face mask," and instead we're going to say, well, it's no different than driving laws. We drive on this side of the road to protect people from going head on on this side, right? Well, if, if we've got to go through this window where we're going to have, and I love the way it's laid out, right, social distancing, then maybe plexiglass, then masks if we have to, well, that's what we're going to do.
Yeah. And I, you know what, I know that I'm in, I'm in line with you folks here in the room, I get that. I, like I said, I've just, I've recently experienced where that can sometimes be misinterpreted, so I wanted to make that clear.
And don't be more of it.
There will be more.
We just got to be patient, because everybody's in it, everybody's in a difference.
Exactly. Exactly. Trust that everyone here has the best interest, we have.
Well.
The interest of the kids and our students and staff at the core of this.
Yeah, and kind of, I'm going to jump into your agenda, because we're going to get movement here. So back to the board's next steps, I think this is back to communication, because again, we, our next board meeting is July 20th, but obviously I think we need to do something more of a public forum type, discussion type before that.
And I want to, I just want to make sure before we go to that, there is an item here on the.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Sorry, Andrew, no, no, you're, you're fine. On item D on this, so a lot of tool boards in the state have been doing some sort of an endorsement or a certification, if you will, of this plan. Now, this is a plan, it's a living document. It is a, it's a, you know what, where it is right now, we are in support of. We understand it's going to grow, we might have questions, it's a changing document. I think we need to understand and maybe discuss as a group if that is something that we're comfortable with. It's not a, it's not a policy, it's not required.
I move, we accept the report.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any other discussion about that? One thing that I proposed was that we would be updated and make sure that we're notified as this document materially changes. Okay.
It's going to change a lot.
Of course it will.
Every one, that's good.
Absolutely, we want that.
Every one change.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, certification. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I know I.
No, that's, that's next steps.
So I guess what, you know, this is against all discussion, but what is our plan? Again, I think we need to do it. I mean, today was great, we had a great group come in and speak, we had a lot of emails, but I do think it needs to be some sort of setting where we can bring in almost more people and have a discussion, some sort of forum or something.
Are you, we opposed to have it in like a gymnasium or something?
That's, that's, yeah, that's, I was thinking, anything larger.
Or the auditorium.
Auditorium.
Or.
I don't, yeah.
Okay, and something too, we could consider, one, some things we could consider are smaller groups, not even necessarily for COVID, but also just smaller groups, like, does it make sense to have building forums, or, you know what I mean? Because there's so widely different concerns maybe, and, and also maybe possibly mitigation strategies. So I know that's one thing that a couple of districts are doing, are like those kinds of building or level forums as well.
And that's on the 20th?
No, our 20th is our next meeting.
Our next board meeting, and I'm just trying to think of something beyond that.
Talk a little bit about the public forum, I mean, I think this is good, I mean, that's what we do for our meetings. If, so I'm just going to throw out the situation where, where I think several of these probably tonight would have vehemently argue with the recommendations coming from the committees that we are saying this is what we're following.
Yeah.
It's, then is the form there to let them vent, but we're going to change our opinion that we're following that, or? I'm just trying to, I don't want to, I don't want to get into a face mask, no face masks, face masks, no face masks.
That's an excellent question, Tyler. What's the purpose of this? Is the purpose of this, these meetings to say, "We know more now. Guys, let's get together with the parents or whatever, families of this building, with that building, and let's talk about through maybe some question and answer details."
More orientation.
The truth is, yeah, I don't know how you guys feel, but some of this just simply isn't a vote, like a public opinion vote. It's on our shoulders to probably do that. So, good point, it's about how we phrase that.
I mean, to me, then it would be more of, here are the recommendations and what's behind it, and this is why we're proposing that. I'm not saying people couldn't have their say.
Oh, yeah.
But it, I'd be careful not to just have.
Open it up, do they?
Open up where we feel like we're debating something that this committee has now worked pretty hard to say, this, this is the right direction to go.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree. I, I, it's a lot.
I mean, we could make this decision because we just woke up and did it. We made it because of all the work people had to do, this is what they're saying.
When we make that, yeah, the other question is, even when that decision should happen? How soon to that day, how much notice do we even know, right? How much do we care? Because even a decision is a decision in time, it's what we know based off of that day, not.
I mean, we, for, I mean, this is, seems probably like a silly example, but, you know, we're talking about materials of students touching materials, quarantining materials. Well, we originally, we're at 10 days, now we're at 72 hours. So I think that that's the fluidity of what we're learning, and I do think that we're July 1st, in another month, it's going to look different. We don't, I don't know what different means, but it's going to look different. And thinking of something that John just said, you know, kind of like, he says something like, oh, maybe like an orientation, as we get closer, people just want to know what it's going to look, what it's going to look like when they get here.
I think that's.
Whatever mode that would be.
I think that was most of what I heard.
Yes.
Just, when will I know, when will I know what to plan?
Well, we've seen videos, some of us have seen videos taken of schools where kids look like they're in prison guard, you know, that they can't, you know, they're walking like this or whatever. I mean, we want it, we've talked through, I mean, well, sorry, I'm scared, I'm tired. We've talked as an admin team and as a committee chair team of, how can we make some videos that, you know what, it's not going to be scary, we don't want people to be in fear. If, the face covering is a good example of this. Why would we wear them? We wear them because we care about each other. We care about each other as a community members. I'm wearing, I'm wearing, I'm not wearing mine for me, I'm wearing mine for you. That's the story that we're telling, if that's the route that we, you know, if, if August 1st, we're, you know, we're still in that mode, that that's what all the research is showing us and telling us to do. But it's, it's our reason why, we don't want to have people in fear about it, we don't want people to be afraid to come to school, we want people to feel good about coming to school, and, and if your teacher is wearing this, it's okay. I don't know.
No, it's true.
We've got to protect our staff. That's, that's my biggest worry. I mean, well, I'm not as worried about the kids, I mean, I'm worried about, but I'm not as much as I'm worried about our staff. That's the part, we really have to focus our staff.
Okay, I have a comment from Amy that says, you know, we could do something like we did for the bond forum, where we have people submit questions online, via email, calls, give a deadline, and then they, we try to answer those questions in the forum with maybe a moderator or something.
I think, I think some of the question is, that has, we have to understand, like, July 20th is our next meeting. When, so like I said, like, I could imagine that we would set a date, right, and say, okay, here's a date where we are going to let our parents know this is the proposed model for the year. And then regardless of that, the next week it might change, right?
When you say model.
I'm sorry, what, how we will start the school year, just how we would start.
You mean either in person, online, or hybrid?
Whatever that is, yeah.
So we don't, today we're saying we're not going to be in person.
I'm saying based off of information that we know in August. When do we, when do they know for sure? Will they know for sure? Maybe I'm misunderstanding this. You, listen, we're not making a decision tonight.
No, I'm not saying you are, but.
But maybe the way, maybe the way to go would just have a, have a video that summarizes the discussion that we've had tonight, that given the information we know, on July 1st, we are expecting to have in class. We don't know necessarily the protocols, but as we go to a hybrid, the protocols will go up, and if it gets to certain phases, then we're going to go to all online, but we're working on those details to lay out what those triggers are, but it's going to be with the people, you know, whoever helping us put those things together. I think just communicating that information gets us a long step, and not getting into all the details, and then be the next time we're going to weigh in on this is, you know, And then be, the next time we're gonna weigh in on this is, you know, pick a date, August 1st, we're gonna come with an update, as well as, you know, announce when we're gonna have orientations, so that we can provide more detailed information per building. I, I don't know, something like that, to me, goes a long way, because just telling people that it's not gonna be available till August 1st helps you a lot. It's stop asking me because it's not available.
And really, the reason, if we don't go to that model, it's gonna be public information, whether county comes out or the state comes out, it's gonna say you can't do it. I mean, that, it's gonna come to that level where it's gonna be a, you no longer have that option. Yeah, so, I'm not trying to debate it at all, but I mean, the questions that were coming in, the emails are, are we coming back to school? And I think we need to be saying, that's what we're working towards, without, without question.
That's our goal.
We don't even bring up the online, we don't even bring up the hybrid.
Until our situation arises.
We're working towards that now. We've done all this great work, and we may need to go in those directions, given this matrix.
Right.
August, whatever the date is, that's what we're working towards is in person, so that it's, there was, there was just a lot of confusion that I didn't expect there, there was. But now, in retrospect, I'd say, well, why wouldn't that be in order?
I think, and where I'm coming at this from is, so I, I'm a parent with young kids, I'm not, but if I was a parent with young kids, um, and I'm, I'm listening to this meeting, and I'm like, okay, yeah, good, fine, I don't have to have any, like, some of that stuff, you just can't react to that fast. You know what I mean? So, maybe I'm not, I'm, I'm getting what you're saying, that there has to be, at this point, we have no, no reason to say otherwise. I'm totally, I get what you're saying, there's nothing that tells us right now, or not, there's not enough that tells us right now. However, um.
It's, it, it, what is my plan A? I, I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
Right.
And your plan A is you're coming back to school.
Yeah, and we just.
And if, and if hospitalizations go up and COVID goes crazy in August, well, then, people would recognize, wow. They were planning for plan A, but they, this is plan A, B, and C.
I, I think what Deb is saying, and I know I'm probably not supposed to be interrupting myself here, but, is for the families that are thinking of childcare, that, that, that is our goal, everything you're saying is the goal that we want, we know that that's what's best for kids. But, there could be, we hope not. We don't know what the situation's gonna look like. We don't wanna leave people hanging the second week in August and say, oh, guess what? We're in hybrid now. I, am I, is that where you're going with this?
Yeah, but how do we know?
We don't know.
But I, I get your point.
But that's where you'd qualify it with our expectation today. You gotta, you gotta date stamp it.
Yeah, we're sitting here today, and we're dying, if we start today, we're gonna go come back to school. Now, if nothing changes for the next thirty days, we're coming back to school. If it gets better, we're coming back to school. If it gets worse, we're gonna take it, we're gonna move it around and see where we are.
Okay, I'm gonna just throw something out there then, because right now, when what we're saying, it depends, if we're looking at the guidelines that we have referenced in here, I don't know that we can social distance with everybody in here. Lindsay, I, I want you to, that you need to speak to that.
We can, there's no way we can, if we bring everyone back, and so we're saying we're not going to, then if we're saying we're gonna have a hundred percent all in, then that's what that means?
Yeah, and that's the only reason I'm saying that. I mean, I don't, I can't, I personally can't say that we could bring everybody and do the social distancing that would be required at this time. But that's this time and place, but if you don't, I mean, we don't agree, that's, we don't have.
No, but I, no, I get that, I get, you're okay, but no, I mean, you're, you're saying the right thing. I mean, I think that's the real discussion, right? Is, if we're coming back a hundred percent, this is what that looks like. It means that we can't do this, this, and this.
Okay.
We can't do this, this, and this.
Got it.
And so, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with whatever, you know. Maybe we go put five-foot sheets of plexiglass on all the, all the teachers' desks. Because truly, those are the ones that we're worried about, not, not that we're not worried about the kids, but they seem to be real resilient versus the older population. And, and I think we have to be real, so what I don't wanna do is, is say something that we can't do.
Right.
And so if we're gonna be back a hundred percent, and the reality of it is, is, is we're not going to be able to social distance, we need to let those parents know that, that they're not gonna wanna be a part of that, and we need to let them know.
Yeah.
And if we get, half of our kids are gonna be like, well, I'm not coming back if we're not six feet apart, well, now we know we're in hybrid, right? By default.
I'm going back to this just one more time. I'm fine with you guys, I'm fine with what you're saying. I, like I said, and, and maybe you guys don't get as many emails as I do.
Well, you get most couple.
But I want to be, make sure that people understand what we're saying, what we mean by that is, right now, there's not enough evidence to propel us to say this or that. We really don't have any decision, really, tonight. We're saying, we, that's our goal, that's our next place, we would love, we want to be there, we think that's the best mode. Lindsay just told us, we can't fit everybody in the same building, and, and all of our buildings in social distance. So, we're also assuming that perhaps some of this is going to, because the, the sources we have identified tell us social distance. The sources that are guiding our decisions tell us social distance. I'm not, please don't misunderstand it, and I already know I'm gonna get a lot of emails for this statement, I don't mean this in a bad way. But our, it's not a poll of what our parents want necessarily, if Story County Public Health, and this, and this, and this, and this, say.
But then we're, but then we're starting hybrid. I, I mean, just the reality of our discussion then would be is, is if, if we say social distancing is what we're going to for the start meeting.
But they're also starting to have conversations, is it six feet or three?
Oh, you see what I'm saying? You have hit the nail on the head, Tyler, because it's so fluid. July 1st, today, gosh, I don't think we, I don't, but in two weeks, it could be three feet with a face covering.
So, so it's, it's, maybe it's now more philosophical, because I.
I was the one that said.
We've gotta stand behind these guidances, right? But I'm hoping they're getting realistic with what that means.
Yeah.
And so the question, the question is, are we driving towards a hundred percent?
I got another option, another option, just to throw out there, is, is, whatever these things come in with, whatever the triggers are. So I'm just saying, we default to, to the masters with regard to what the triggers are. But otherwise, we're a hundred percent, and we'll do everything that we can do to follow these guidelines.
Yeah.
Inside of all the kids are back that wanna come. And, and that's where I'm at, just to, you know, to put that out there. So the idea is, is everything we can do, we will do. But some of them are not going to be possible if we're saying we want a hundred percent kids back and we get high.
And this isn't a guilt problem, this is every school.
No, but, but I'm just saying, I think we gotta get real, that at some point in time, we gotta go with the practicalities. And, and so I have a brother that, that works, works in Lynn Marrian schools, and we were having this discussion. And he goes, anybody that's witnessed, a thousand kids go into lunchroom in any one of our schools, knows that this can't be done. I mean, what it means, it can't be done, is, is what he said. And, and what the reality of it is, 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 is that if you even have half the kids there, you can't feed them. And so, I don't know that that's true, that, that's his, his vision of it, but I think the application of it is, is, is I think we have to get to the place of, if we think a hundred percent of the students being back here is a higher priority, then we have to default to, we're gonna do the best we can to follow these things, given that, that our first priority is having them all here.
We've already talked about mitigation.
Yeah.
Right? So social distancing was the first one, but if you can't do that, you go there, if you can't do that, you go here. Get them all in here.
Sure, sure, sure. But it, it could be misunderstood, Tyler, that, that we are going to have six-foot deal. But if you're saying it's our first defense, when possible, then that's, that's a different look, right?
That committee spent the time to go through that mitigation one, right?
But we don't understand it, Tyler, so that, that's, I'm not understanding that, because I, I'm just getting up to speed on it now. So when we were talking, I'm just thinking, well, we're all coming back and we're gonna make the best of it, right? Until we hit some triggers, and then when we're in hybrid, then, then we go to social distancing and all that goes with that. But knowing that it's fluid, that, you know, who knows what it's gonna look like, but if that's the case, I'm, I'm good with that.
Can I possibly just reword this, because I think I kind of had an oh moment? So, right now, right here at this meeting, I think what I hear is that, right now, we don't have all of the details. These groups are still, or these people, we're still gonna keep diving into details, diving into details. Um, and until those deep, details tell us we cannot do back to school, we are going with back to school. And is that a way to say that it's a little bit more, like, that until those details drive us somewhere else? Maybe the details are matrix, maybe it's, I think it's mostly the matrix, but I mean, ooh, we can't, we can't do this mitigation factor. Then at that point, I, that I feel, I, like, with that framework, I'm, I'm okay.
Well, but the cascading mitigation factors is, is new to me, you know, so, so the idea is, 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 if we get down to, we can't do this mitigation factor, then we gotta go to hybrid. Now, is that?
Matrix, matrix will show us when to go.
Well, we can, we can tell.
Matrix could say, you've got two or three positives in this building, do you shut it down, or what do you do?
Yeah.
What, what I'm referring to is, and I thought it's very well laid out here, is social distance, that's, that's. Yeah, what are we doing? Can't, well, then you better start doing some of that, last resort, you're all wearing this. Well, you could say, if everybody wants to come in here, you're here, but you're wearing that, if that's what we get down to. But it's still open, and it's here.
Okay, so none of those, none of those missing mitigate, mitigation factors then would be like, okay, now we gotta, we gotta go to hybrid. That's what I was wondering, it's a different, it's a different.
Hybrid, it means we've just had an escalation in cases, and now it's not safe for teachers, because, and this is where the Department of Ed didn't come through. Because we've now got as many cases, and it's, we, we recommend you shut it up, building down now, or whatever, right?
Okay, okay, no, that's good, that's good color, because I didn't understand that.
The other piece of hybrid too, I would think, is again, if we open up, and then all of a sudden, we've got thirty percent or whatever that just don't come back, well, that'd be, we are forced to be hybrid, because we got a large group that we gotta figure out.
And if, if I can't be six feet apart, then I'm not sending my kids, because that's what, that's what ninety-nine cents.
Forty-four percent might already be there.
I was just gonna say, you guys, there really isn't, I think this idea of a hundred percent is just not going to happen, because there's a certain number of people that say, no. They know that right now, that like, even just the fact that we say this, until they hear otherwise, their answer is no, I don't want lying. So that's a form of, like, volunteer hybrid.
Yeah, but I didn't think.
Their choice, hybrid.
Their choice.
But it, but it covers the reality, we can't deliver something we can't deliver.
Yeah, understood, understood, yeah.
It's, we can wish it to be so, but it doesn't pay us all.
Guys, at the end of this, we still haven't talked about what are we going to do in order to get communication and things to our district, our patrons?
They can do it. I just do a video of just what we just, with this last five minutes would be very helpful to people.
Before, before school starts, I, I mean, before school starts, I'm sorry, but, but at some point, um, my, my thought is that we need to, we need to at least open up at building level or whatever, where people can communicate and ask serious questions about what does this mean? I don't understand this, how do you do it? I think you can do it by video, you can do it by email, but there's just, there's gonna have to be a question and answer.
Some sort of guy combining an orientation, question, answer type deal.
Orientation.
Yeah, see, there'll be lots of things that we didn't anticipate that we'll have to pick up, but I do believe.
Not scheduling one now is.
This, this cascading sense of how we're gonna do protection takes care of a lot of it. It's, it's, it gives you the cover of, those things are gonna shift as facilities allow for them to.
Okay, and we will continue, and we, I'm saying this, and I'm half saying it, I'm half asking, we will continue, obviously, to have public forum available at every school board meeting. I would imagine in a similar way to what we've done here, so, um, and then in order to allow the meeting, we do have to know in advance when people are coming in, things like that, but I think we do need to continue to keep these available. Email is still an option, phone is still an option, and these public forums.
So, I, I'm, in where I started, which I think communication's gonna be critical, and out of tonight, I think we need to communicate whatever it looks like, right? So, but that we're comfortable that we're saying our goal is toward bringing kids back, right? And, and that's why we're, that's why we're working towards this, I think we have to communicate that. I like the idea of a forum, but I would put it, I like the idea that's put it more of a bond. In other words, we're gonna do a lot of work, come up with CDC, or the, you know, pediatrics, here's some data, and you may not agree with it, but this is why we're doing it, because there are some folks that you have to appreciate in our district that are concerned about that, right? And, and you do it more informationally, still have Q and A. And I love the idea of, of, of getting around buildings, right? Whether that's virtually or whatever, what's this gonna look like for my child?
That's what people really wanna know.
What's this gonna look like for my child in fifth grade, eighth grade, and then high school?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
So when do you want to do that?
Um, I don't, I don't know that it's.
Before, after the next.
I think we should talk in detail about that on the July meeting.
Perfect.
I, I think there's a lot of details to still.
And I think, you know, a public forum, you make available too. I'd like, I'd love to know the feedback of what we get of, you know, what we decided tonight.
Yeah, if we're gonna get questions, if we're gonna create more questions, which will be good. More questions for us to answer, more on the, on the whiteboard.
Do you want us, thinking about what you just both said, um, do you want us to put something on the website that people could submit questions now?
I would think you guys, the.
Let's, let's get organized.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that, that, that question came up through the.
Yeah, let us get organized, and then we'll.
I'm worried that people will just ask, there'll be more just.
Detail, 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 because we're not there.
I assume all the admin team questions, not every day, I assume you go, no matter what, you're getting emails and calls, and maybe you're getting Amy, and everybody's getting emails already, so I mean, that's, they're still there.
But you guys have done a fantastic job of getting the big lift done, because just even saying that we have these groups, and all these things are being considered, and we're dialing it, we're dialing it down, so that we can reassure our patrons that, hey, we're on top of this.
We're, we're ahead of every, most districts in the state.
I, I would say though, that I have seen several, um, districts, oh, I think it's tenth, is it H? I have seen several districts provide. So this is a very good, um, detailed document, but sometimes it, I would consider maybe, um, a hold up there's an attitude?
We don't, yeah, we have actually worked on that, we have something in the works.
Hold up.
Rolled up, it's a little bit more summarized.
More summarization.
Like, almost like.
Exactly, summary.
Yeah.
Sure, that's your space.
Let it take the whip. And it would run like after college. Here's the plan. All right, can we be done?
Can we, I guess, we gotta say one thing here before we leave, so everybody is clear. That, is that communication going to be developed by the administration, and, and not, I would not assume that to be a board communication? That, that part that you're talking about, the executive.
I think we need to get that up tomorrow. I think we can work on that tomorrow. Is that okay?
Well, I just wanna make sure we, we know.
You also gotta realize that this, this document will go online, I don't know, right away. Now, but I hope that helps, but, but no one's seen it.
In reality, it's gonna raise more questions, which is why we just need to keep stay way up here. And I'm driving back here, this will help with the framework for when issues come.
And I'd put the recording of this meeting, if you wanna know where we're at, watch this recording.
And, and honestly, is this fair to ask? I'm sorry, sometimes I step on my own toes, but, like, I understand there's going to be so many questions from our patrons. I have questions too, we all do, but maybe if we could just let this sit for a few days and let people figure out more, I think we're going, we're working towards more answers. Now, I'm pleased if people have serious concerns, I'm not suggesting that, but like, I think we need to give this a minute to breathe. Get it out there, absorb it, and then, um, let's, let's take some.
So when would you like, when are you thinking you'd like the district to put something out?
Oh, I, that's fine, I'm just.
No, I'm just, I, I mean, I'm curious, I have thoughts on that.
I think whatever our statement is, he goes on the website tomorrow.
You have to send this stuff out, and send it up, it takes a lot more time than say it's, it's coming.
If we can do it quick in video, video's always better for big information, I just think it's just, just something quite for, again, goals and expectations.
Be like, update on where we, where we expect it being this long. I mean, if, if it lasts two minutes, that's perfect.
And the work that we're continuing to do, the work we've done, just to kinda give everybody a snapshot where we sit today. I think it'd be good to acknowledge, we had some good part of public forum. We are listening, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Here's the direction we're going.
Yeah, and because it's not all figured out, I mean.
Well, the fact that, that we have six different groups that represent all of these stakeholders, that are putting together this plan, so no small amount in.
Move to adjourn.
Give me a second. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. John, sit still.
Thanks.